You're good to go, Commissioner.
Mr. Lawrence, you're ready? Ms. Gay, you ready? Frank County Board of County Commissioners is now in session for this regular meeting Tuesday, December 6th. It's good to see everyone here this morning. We apologize for the late start. We had a little bit of a medical issue out in the parking lot we were trying to attend to. With that, we will get started. We have a lot on the agenda today. We have a lot of the people's business to do. I do appreciate staff for everything they did to help us try to get this ready during the Thanksgiving holiday so we can be ready this morning. And Commissioner Ford, will you lead us in prayer and pledges this morning?
Yes. Well, we come to you today on this foggy day to conduct our county business. We pray that you will guide our ways, guide our decision-making, and help all the people in the room, and help the individual that fell outside. Pray that you will have, hopefully he will have nothing wrong with him and a speedy recovery. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. So, the first item for action this morning is approval of minutes.
That may.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That is a five-o vote. Next will be payment of the county's bills.
Oh, boo.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley.
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That's also unanimous. And up next, Mr. Rowan, are you gonna do this, or is Mr. Fonda Davis gonna do the recognition?
I'll ask Fonda and the coach to approach.
Okay. Yeah, we're gonna do a recognition for the 2022 Teeny Seahawks Football Super Bowl Champions.
Just to let you know, the coach may ask you guys to postpone. When the kids will be off of school, on your 20th, a meeting on the 20th, then you have the whole crew up in there.
Good morning, Commissioners. On the report here, as Commissioner Sanders requested, that we have the football team that went to the playoffs, the Super Bowl, and won.
Is that correct?
And the coaches here, unfortunately, I think the kids couldn't make it, I just found out at this meeting, so Coach Mashburn would like to recognize them at a later date.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So, he may want to have something to say right now.
If we could get them to come to the next meeting would be great.
Okay. That'd be great.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, and Coach Mashburn, bring back that trophy then, 'cause I want those, and I want the cheerleaders too.
Okay.
'Cause they were good, but it was just good. Y'all missed some good ball right there, I'm telling you. And I hope this coming year that we can work together and progress on with the football part of our youth program, because we have softball, baseball, and soccer, and we might need to have to rearrange the soccer and the football to where they don't have to use the fields at the same time. So, that's one problem. That's the reason why they have to use the softball fields for soccer, is because you got football going on at the same time.
Yeah.
So, maybe we can kind of get something going, and it's all about, you know how I am, it's all about the youth in this county and all about people, so I look forward to seeing them on the 20th, Mr. Chairman.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
That is a nice trophy.
Yeah, it is very nice. They did a good job.
While you're here this morning, Mr. Mashburn, how did you guys fare the Durs? I know you won the Super Bowl, but how was the season?
It was great. We didn't lose a game.
Undefeated.
Undefeated.
There you go. That's what I'm talking about.
What I like watching is watch those kids at the very beginning, and you had the running back, going backwards, and you had the nose guards and the right guard and the left guard. The left guard was trying to go right and all that, and then how quickly they got working together, and this is teamwork, just like up here, teamwork. And then they started like a well-oiled machine. I said I'd put them up against any of them NFL teams, any day, they were good. They were that good, wasn't they?
They did good. They did real good.
Yeah.
Anyone else have anything to say this morning?
Thanks for coming today, Mr. Mashburn, and we look forward to seeing you on the 20th.
Yes, ma'am.
For sure.
We've had plenty of discussion about it, so congratulations again.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations on your season.
Thank you.
Hope you have some more than you've been.
We got some good up-and-coming athletes. They're gonna do good for the next few years.
Yeah. Just make sure, Mr. Mashburn, if there's ever anything we can do to help, please make sure we know about it.
Yes, sir.
I do have one question. Are y'all, are y'all doing rings?
They are. They are doing rings for them. I'm, I think they're on order. I'm not a part of that.
Did y'all, what about the, well, could you get somebody to find out about the fundraising? I know y'all did something down there on the light-up night, and...
I will, I'll have Megan Melinder. She, she did a lot of that.
Okay.
And we'll try to get a little bit more information on it for the 20th.
And just get with Mr. Davis. I'm sure he'll be glad to help out, whatever, whatever we can do.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you.
Appreciate you, brother.
Thank you, sir. Y'all have a good day.
You too.
You want me to go on my report or wait?
You can be in just a minute, sir.
Okay.
We're almost there.
He said, "Oh, get out."
Mr. Rowan, just as a matter of taking care of, you said these, the one that I have here for public comment, that's why I'm asking.
Yes.
Is actually for stuff on the agenda, so we only have one for public comment, correct?
Uh, well...
No, they're all for agenda items.
They're both for agenda items. One for the, I think, the hospital, and the other is for doing Pam's report.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify. So, since we have no, no cards turned in for public comments, we'll go on to Court Maxwell.
Okay. Good morning. I just have some information I'd like to share. The clerk's office, tax collector's office, property appraiser, and the supervisor of elections office is gonna have our first annual cookies with Santa. We're gonna have it on December the 19th, it's a Monday, here at the courthouse, and also at the Carabelle Annex on Tuesday, December the 20th. It'll start at 5 until about 6:30. So, I just want to invite everybody to come out to have cookies with Santa. Also, the Grinch is gonna make his appearance, and just bring your kids out and have a good time, and we just hope to see everybody there.
Good.
And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
For the record, I'm not the Grinch.
All right. Up next, Mr. Howard Neighbors, Superintendent of Roads and Bridges.
Good morning, Commissioners. Y'all hear me?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I hope all y'all had a good Thanksgiving. I got no action items this morning, but we still, we continue on cutting grass, cleaning ditches, edging sidewalks, cutting back right away the green roads.
Sounds good. Anyone have any questions or concerns for Mr. Neighbors this morning, Commissioners?
If I may, how are you feeling better?
I can talk a little bit. That's a good thing.
That's a good thing. All right. Good.
Thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir.
I will notice, just because, to make sure the public is aware, if you're here and you have an agenda, you can see it, but they might not know, we did have a couple of days in the last couple of weeks where we actually received no inmate labor. There was a couple of zero days. Just want to make sure the public is aware of that.
Yes.
So, we're doing what we can, and probably moving toward doing some kind of temporary help or more seasonal help to move us along and help us not fall behind on stuff.
Yeah, we had six inmates yesterday. We had six inmates today, so, and we are, by talking rain there with the state, and I don't think it can get to 98. So, we are trying to cut 98 this morning, and I think it was Christmas parade and all at the end of this week.
Yes, it was Friday.
Clean that up and make that look good.
Sounds good. Mr. Jefferson?
I just want to thank y'all for what you do, Howard. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. You're welcome, Commissioner.
And we probably will have another, well, no, we'll have another time. It ain't Christmas quite yet.
Yeah.
I'm getting lost here, but thank y'all for everything y'all do for us, Mr. Howard.
I got one...
Well, go ahead.
Buster, I mean Howard, sorry about that. You did, did they get with, they, I got with George Moore yesterday, and Mr. DeWitt was with us. Did they get back with you and let you know?
Yes, sir, they did. I talked to DeWitt about it this morning.
Did, has Mr. Moore reached out to you yet?
He has not, Commissioner.
Okay. All right. He said that he could give us whatever we want right there. He was more than willing to do whatever we need, as long as it was a temporary. So, so that should be taken care of.
Okay, yeah, that'd be fine, as long as it's legal, you know, we'd go in there and clean that ditch. There's a lot of water runs through that ditch here, so, and it is a natural rain, and it's been there for years and years, so, it'd help a lot of water get off that black road.
Well, I explained to him the inmate situation, so, and that's why he said he can extend the temporary easement to fit whatever we need. That wasn't a problem, so.
Okay.
I'd imagine after the holidays or whatnot, that would probably be your slow time, you know, with it being a non-growing season, be the best time to try to get somebody out there, but, but he's aware of our inmate challenge, so he's gonna be flexible as far as the days he can, he'll, he'll stretch that temporary easement out, so.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for working on that, too.
No problem.
That issue.
That's what I'm looking for.
Sir.
Howard, before you go, I do have one thing that, what Commissioner Amison brought up, made me think about it. So, we have a issue in East Point where Indian Creek was intentionally filled up, part of Indian Creek, but the property has changed hands, and the new property owner says he's fine with us obtaining easement to get in there and clean it out, like it needs to, so it'll actually flow.
Okay.
It was actually intentionally stopped up by a resident.
Okay, and I'm glad you brought that issue up on, basically that Daisy Lane.
Yep, that's right.
And where that cover goes under the road, the road right is real, real rough.
Yes.
We had a few complaints on that, want to know when we're gonna change that pipe out, or what, what we're gonna do, you know, in the future with that issue.
Well, it's, it is on DOT's five-year work claim, and I think we're going through the design process right now. Matter of fact, that's one of the documents we're gonna sign today, isn't it, Ms. Griffin? With Hickory Dip. Isn't that one of the documents we're gonna sign today? But now, if it's too bad, Mr. Howard, we can try to address cutting that road, taking that covert out and replacing it now, but it just, the road won't be fixed like it needs to be.
It's not that bad. It's real rough right in that area.
Right.
But it ain't, you know, it ain't bad enough that they can't go over it, so.
Right.
It's just real good.
Yeah, that, we might could just go in and throw a, a patch big enough to make it smooth across it, but I'll be with you after the meeting.
Yes, sir.
We'll discuss.
But we could change that pipe out, you know, if you try to look at it, you know.
Well, yeah, it's gonna have to be done anyway, but they're doing the design right now, so I want to make sure, what do we do? We're not messing up what they're trying to do with DOT.
That's correct. That's what I did want to do.
Yeah, but, yeah, we can communicate about that and try to see what we can do.
Okay.
Anyone else? Mr. Neighbors, thank you.
Thank y'all, Commissioners.
All right. Fonda Davis, it is now your turn, sir. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Once again, Commissioner, I had three items on my report this morning. One has already been taken care of.
Okay.
The next item would be employee new hire announcement. The Frank County Parks and Recreation Department is pleased to announce that Stuart Burnett, Sammy Jo Kier, appeared at the open entry level position for Parks and Rec. Effective that start date is Monday, November 28th. Also, Katharina Barnaby moved from part-time at the courthouse to full-time. So, that's three Parks and Rec positions that's been filled. In the Solid Waste Department, we hired Jeffrey Banks as a truck driver. Effective date, start date was today.
Okay.
Just to let you all know. All right? The next item is for the board's information, Commissioner Sanders, also last meeting, wanted the press box. I reached out to one contractor. He has not gotten back with me yet on the amount or what it would take to do the press box.
Thank you, Fonda.
Yes, ma'am. You're welcome. And that's all I have for the board this morning.
Okay. Commissioners, anyone have anything for Mr. Davis?
Just want to thank him for the job that they do in the county, because they do a lot.
You're welcome. Thank you, Commissioner.
Speaking of, Mr. Chairman, if nobody else does, page 27 of your report, can we go to item six? Sure, the mic is working on it. But as the board is aware, Commissioner Ward has been requesting improvements to the exterior of the Carabelle Annex building, especially the landscape. Happy, I am happy to report that with the assistance of Commissioner Sanders, Mr. Shane Phillips, our county maintenance person, and the Parks and Recreation Department, the exterior of the building and sidewalks have been power washed, landscape maintenance, including cleaning and trimming, that's been done, and the building is decorated for the Christmas season. In addition, staff has received, which we asked for, $8,600 quote from Plant It Green over in Carabelle to trim all the cherry laurels, remove existing shrubs, rebed with new plants, tarp all the beds with nylon landscape fabric, and mulch all beds with Bahama rocks. In addition, for the same price, they will also upgrade irrigation system. After that is done, completed, then we will engage Mr. Ray Messer from over in Carabelle to maintain the new landscape system. So, I just wanted to mention that to the board, see if you have any concerns, any questions. But Fonda, thank your crew again for the help that they gave on Friday. I know it's outside of their wheelhouse per se, but, you know, we can all count on Parks and Recreation to help us out.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Thank you. And now, I wanted to make sure, I've been, for a while now, trying to get the annex over there fixed up, because I feel like it's a representation for our county, so thank you to Michael for getting that done. Thank you, Commissioner Sanders, for the recommendation from Mr. Messer.
She was.
And I'm glad it's gonna be ready for Christmas for the cookie.
And it's pretty over there.
Yeah.
We like it.
So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. You're welcome.
Yep, that was on time, Commissioner Sanders. That was on time.
Mr. Rowan, does that require board action? That has information?
No, so because the quote was below the 10,000, I just want to inform the board of what we're doing over there, because it's been a nagging issue for the board for some time now.
And the, and the, what I like about it is the Planet Green people are gonna use native... And the, and the, what I like about it is the Planet Green people are gonna use native, native plants, so it's not gonna be some wild-looking thing that is probably invasive in the long run, you know what I'm saying? So, but anyway, it looks so much better, though. Thank you, Commissioner Ward.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
And thank you, staff.
Anything else, Mr. Rowan?
Uh, not for Mr. Davis, no.
Commissioners, anyone have anything for Mr. Davis while he's still here?
That's good.
Fonda? Yes, sir. Thank you for everything y'all do. All three departments that you're kind of over for us and oversee for us. Big departments. Y'all do a lot for us. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Commissioners, all for being supportive.
Yes, sir. All right, Ms. Pam Brunel, Parks and Management, or Ms. Jennifer Daniels, whoever's there.
Good morning, Commissioners. I apologize Pam can't be here today. She is very sick, possibly has the flu, headed to the doctor this morning. Um, we do not have any action items for you today.
But I have an action item for you, Commissioner. I'm really proud to do. All right. So, at your last meeting, Ms. Brunel announced her retirement. So the board directed staff to advertise internally to fill the vacant emergency management director position. Ms. Jennifer Daniels, in front of you here today, was the only applicant, uh, application received for this position. So, is the board prepared to hire Ms. Daniels as the emergency management effective January third, twenty-twenty-three? I am. So moved. I don't have a vote, but I.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Lock, and a second by Commissioner Sanders. I do have a point of clarification. We do have a, someone wants to publicly comment.
Oh, we sure do. We sure.
Before we move along.
Do we need to hold back?
No, no, that's fine. We haven't taken any action.
I'm going to, and his name is, I'm gonna allow him to talk right now, 'cause he signed in as the Walton County.
Jeff Goldberg. Mr. Jeff Goldberg.
All right, you can let him know, sir. He's unmuted, and he can address the board.
Good morning, Mr. Goldberg.
Good morning, Chairman Jones. Uh, can, uh, you hear me okay?
Yep, we hear you fine.
Awesome. Okay, just for the record, my name is Jeff Goldberg. I'm the emergency management director for Walton County. Um, first off, I wanted to congratulate Director Brunel on her retirement. Uh, I've worked closely with her and her staff over the past seven years since I've been the director here in Walton County, and, uh, she's been an incredible asset to your county. She's been great to work with. Uh, and, you know, we've kind of forged a sister county relationship with Franklin County. Uh, I come over there and I help provide some training. Uh, unfortunately, but somewhat fortunately, I was doing some training during the East Point fires. Uh, that's when I first met you, Chairman Jones, uh, a number of years ago, uh, in helping out with that. So, again, you know, congratulations to Pam. I'm sorry if she's not feeling well. I'm gonna go ahead and shoot her a text a little bit later. Uh, but the main reason why I wanted to address the commission was to give my support to Deputy Director Daniels to get the director position. Uh, like I said, I've been affiliated with Walton County, and we've been working closely with Franklin for about the past seven and a half years or so. That's when I first met Deputy Director Jet Daniels, uh, at a FIFA conference. And since then, her and I have become fast friends. Um, her family's become my family, and, uh, you know, we go out that way quite a bit to, uh, you know, to, to visit. Uh, but I, I've seen her work in disasters. I've seen her do training, uh, you know, her plan writing, her coordination, how she works with the other agencies. I've seen that firsthand, and I'm not just supporting this because, you know, her and I are great friends. I'm, I'm supporting this based on my almost forty years of experience in the emergency management field. Uh, Deputy Director Daniels has been, uh, involved in the Florida Emergency Preparatness Association on the Board of Directors. She's been on various commissions. She's a certified emergency manager, and I know that under her leadership, she's gonna take the emergency management department to the next level there in Franklin County. And I just wanted to publicly support her and, and give you all that bit of information as well.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. We really appreciate your time this morning and, uh, and your sentiments, sir. There's no other, is there any discussion before we vote? We do have a motion in a second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Congratulations.
We don't know yet if it's congratulations or not, but, you know. It'll all be good.
Was hope. Thank you.
I will say, though, while we're here, um, there is a difference, folks, to doing tabletop exercises and making decisions when it's time to make a decision. And like I expressed to some residents, they were kind of giving me the what-for a couple of months ago about a decision to do voluntary evacuations. Unless you've made decisions for everybody and know that you're doing your best to keep everybody safe, you're really not qualified to make a comment about it. Uh, because at the end of the day, the emergency management department is very important to Franklin County, very important to our residents. We will never cease to be a low-line coastal county in Florida, and by golly, every time one of those storm hurricanes come around the tip of Florida, the first thing that out of their mouth is Appalachian Cola. So, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I wanna reiterate that, too. Um, I've seen you do a lot of things for our county, even not as a director, and, and with Ms. Pam going out, I can't think of anybody better to fill her shoes. So, welcome, congratulations, and I look forward to, to having you as our new director.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Get ready, I got a broken record every year.
We will be ready.
Yes, sir.
Storm ready.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations, Jen.
Thank you.
Yep, congratulations. I believed in you, and I believed in Pam a long time ago. I thought, you know, it's good for the people, and y'all have done an outstanding job.
Thank you.
To have other, other emergency management, uh, directors in the state recognize the low Franklin County's emergency management department, and they got beaucoup of monies, more monies than what we have coming into Franklin County. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now get in the world.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all.
That's my favorite.
Up next.
Remember that.
That's right. Up next, Mr. Eric Lovestreet, the Office Extension Office.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Mr. Eric.
I do not have any action items for you, but, uh, would like to mention a couple of very positive things from my written report.
Okay.
I said I would give you an update on the total peanut butter collection, and when we added in the matching amount that the Florida peanut producers provided along with what we collected throughout the county, we collected one thousand six hundred and twenty-seven pounds of peanut butter. So it's a tremendous amount of good, healthy food going to, um, the food banks in Appalachian Carabelle. Um, we've also been implementing the family nutrition program in the county for many years through a grant that the University of Florida manages, and this year, I just recently got my budget for the twenty-twenty-three year coming up, and the grant will be providing just over sixty-four thousand dollars to implementing that program here in Franklin County. Um, that covers the salary and fringe for our program assistant that resides here at the office and goes into the schools, and also all of the program supplies that go along with that. So, really nice, um, contributions to what we can do with the extension program.
Good. Those are all good things, Mr. Eric. Anyone have any questions or concerns for Mr. Eric while he's here? Sir, thank you for everything you do. Have a good day.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yes, sir. All right, up next, Ms. Whitney Roundtree, Library Director.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Um, I've got one action item for you today. Unfortunately, our full-time library assistant, Nancy Huffman, will be retiring effective December ninth. Um, she's retiring and relocating across the country to be closer to family. Uh, I know the staff and the community will greatly miss her. Um, our part-time library assistant, Thomas Riley, will be promoted to full-time effective December twelfth after her departure. So I am requesting from the board to advertise and fill the part-time position that will be vacated by Thomas Riley at the current rate of pay at twelve seventy-five an hour.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion reported by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion, Commissioners? I do like the idea of moving a part-time person up and hiring another part-time person.
Yeah, Thomas has been with us a little over six months. Um, he's done really well. He's a go-getter, so, um, I'm looking forward to having him on board a full-time. I think he's gonna do really well.
Cool. I do like the idea. Thank you. Any other discussion, Commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anything else, Ms. Whitney?
Uh, well, other than that, um, uh, January and February, we have our big fundraisers. The Friends of the Franklin County Library have their annual soup, bread, and book sale. Uh, East Points will be January twenty-first, and Carabelle's will be February eighteenth. Um, they actually were one of the recipients of the TDC grant, so we, we've been putting all that to marketing and advertising, so we're hoping for a big turnout this year. Um, we also have a lot of, if you, um, see the library programs, we have a lot of holiday events. Um, we'll have the animal safari, or excuse me, animal tales hot, holiday safari. That's always really popular, so looking forward to that as well. And that's all I have for you.
It definitely looks like a full agenda of stuff going on, that's for sure.
Yeah, we're very busy.
Good, good. As it should be. Thank you, Ms. Whitney, for everything you do.
Thank you, and I, I wish y'all happy holidays.
Yes, ma'am. All right, up next, Mr. Ted Mosteller, Interim Airport Manager.
Good morning, Commissioners, staff.
Good morning.
Uh, as in my report, I have no particular action items this morning. I will note that the, uh, land clearing, they, as of yesterday, I'd say somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen to twenty acres cleared already. Um, John informs me that he plans to be here next meeting for, uh, bid opening on the fuel farm, and also, uh, bring you update on pending projects. I'm at your disposal, whatever. Any questions, discussion?
Any questions, Commissioners?
How y'all coming with the drainage?
Uh, that's in the mill. Uh, John will be updating that next week, uh, next meeting.
Yeah, but it hasn't actually started yet, has it?
No, sir. No, sir. Matter of fact, Collins Construction, who is doing the, uh, land clearing now, uh, hopes that they will be involved with that bid, so.
Good. Okay.
He's anxious to bid on it.
Good job. Good, Ted.
Just, just so I got clarity on that, that bid with, with Collins, that's just for the approach only. That has nothing to do with.
That's correct.
Back on the side of.
The first phase, yes, sir.
Yeah, to clarify, I think we're doing phases, Commissioner Amos, because of the way the grant was, or the size of the grant, but there are subsequent grants that we know we're gonna receive to do.
So that, that money that, that was appropriated for just that approach was how much?
Yes, it's all in the money, when the money becomes available.
I think it's what he's asking, Mr. Ted.
How much was it just to, just the approach?
Uh, three or four hundred? Yeah, and then it's another seven or eight, maybe even nine hundred thousand is coming uh, next fiscal, state fiscal year for the entire, the clearance of the entire airport, all the debris removal. And that sort of separate from the, uh, the project that Commissioner Lockley just asked about and the fuel farm. All that is different grants that we have going on.
But, but as far as the clearing of the, you know, getting the setback off the runway?
Yeah.
Is that gonna also include line of sight with the approaching runways?
Um, that will be another phase coming down the road.
Yeah, that, that's in the big project, Commissioner, that will be done next year.
That's a lot of money.
Yes.
This is a lot of money.
Lot of money at the airport.
Lots of money. A little more.
And the good thing is, you know, uh, what I enjoy, especially working with AFCON, is that somehow, 'cause we can't get it done with anybody else, somehow they can take state money as our match with a federal grant. We, that doesn't happen too often, so I don't know how they, and I probably shouldn't say about it publicly, I guess, but, I mean, they're not illegal. But, yeah, there's, they're able to find a way to use FDOT state funding to match for these FAA grants that we're getting.
We did that back in my first tenure with, as airport manager.
Yeah.
He worked then.
With aviation, if I'm not mistaken, there's a lot of matching grant systems out there that, that, I guess that's the term for it.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
But, okay, I appreciate it.
That's good.
Let the public know all this grant money is not costing the county.
We're doing that right now.
That's, that's, yes, and we're not even touching the, the money that goes to what we call airport money, like what the Jangoli grant have, you have that separate. We're not even touching that for any of these projects.
We will be touching it, too.
Well, we're gonna use that, you know, Ted, Aaron, and I, we're gonna use that for different purposes. My point is, we're not using that for the grants. We'll use, we'll use that to purchase equipment for the airport.
Correct.
So, yeah.
Or maintenance issues.
And maintenance issues, too. So.
Absolutely.
You're right, Commissioner Amoson. A lot of money at the airport right now. A lot of state and federal money, which is a good thing.
Any other questions for Mr. Mosteller, Commissioners, or concerns? Mr. Ted, thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, thank you.
You have to use it when the government's spending it, 'cause they, they gonna cut it off sooner or later.
They want you to use it, yes, sir.
So, uh, Mr. Schiller, you're our parliamentarian. Are, do we need to start these public hearings at ten-thirty, or can we go ahead and move through our agenda and then get to them when we get to them? What do we need to do?
Mr. John Creamer is next, sir.
I know that. I just wanna clarify, 'cause I know we're fixing to get to some, these are three or four potentially long discussions.
Yes, sir.
I just want to clarify.
We can start later than ten-thirty if necessary.
Okay, that works. Just wanted to ask.
Okay.
All right, Mr. John Creamer, FWC Regional Director. Sir, you're up next. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank y'all for having us here today to talk about the restoration project in the Bay for oysters. Before we get started, I want to introduce some of our team members. Um, myself, I'm John Creamer. I'm the Northwest Regional Director for FWC. I've talked to several of you in the past. Also here with us today is Dan Eleanor, our Section Leader in Marine Fisheries Division. His area is responsible for the restoration. In addition to Dan, we also have Devin Resco. He's the Program Coordinator for the Fisheries Disaster Relief Program.
Right.
And then finally, we have Gareth Leonard, who cannot be here today due to a prior commitment, but he's our Budget Coordinator for, uh, Gulf Coast Restoration Projects.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Resco's gonna come in a moment, give a presentation on FW, FWC's perspective of where we're at with the oyster restoration.
Right.
Uh, this has been presented to the cab, workshops, to the community, and so forth.
Sounds good.
All right. Well, Devin, at this time, I'll turn it over to him and let him do that.
Yes, sir.
Throughout the presentation, if you have any questions, feel free to ask, and at the end, if there's any issues or concerns, we'll try to address them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Commissioner, staff.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, don't see where you're logged in. Am I missing you somewhere?
So, I, I'm in under, um, John Creamer. Should.
Oh, there you go. And share screen is on, so there you go. Okay, good.
Perfect. All right. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So, um, like John mentioned, uh, my name is Devin Resco. I'm in Tallahassee with the Division of Marine Fisheries Management. My specific title is the Fishery Disaster Relief Program Coordinator. So basically, I'm the bad news guy. If a hurricane hits, or if a pandemic hits, or a fishery collapse occurs, uh, I kinda take over and try and get that back up and running. So, so far, I've dealt with quite a few hurricanes. We had something called COVID come through a few years ago, and now we have a few collapses going on. So far, I'm batting a thousand, so I'm really hoping that we're going to continue to see that success here in Apalachicola Bay for the oyster fishery. Um, so I'm gonna be giving the quick presentation on the overview of the fishery, the collapse that we've seen, and our efforts within FWC to help counteract that. So, um, I don't need to stand up here and tell you guys that that's an iconic fishery. Uh, my parents back home in Kansas, they know what an Apalachicola Bay oyster is. Um, so it's not only economically important to both here, but as well as to the state and even to the nation. Um, there are those quick facts that Franklin County oysters composed primarily ninety percent of the state's oysters and about ten percent of the nation's oysters. So it's a cornerstone of not only the local fishery, but the state fishery. It's also ecologically important, so oyster habitat provides both habitat and food for both commercially as well as recre- recreationally important species. Um, so charter captains utilize that area for their fishing and whatso. Um, but it also filters the water that we get in Apalachicola Bay, also stabilizes the coastline. So it's important for the fishery, but it also provides the, the local ecosystem a lot of benefits as well. About ten years ago, in twenty thirteen, we did see a pretty steep collapse of the oyster fishery here in Appalachia, which here in Appalachia, which was quickly followed by the federal fisheries disaster that was declared. More recently, in summer of 2020, FWC approved draft rules to suspend wild harvest through 2025. So this figure here really just shows a lot of the, uh, information that I provided to you in the last slide, so you can see, um, the yellow is just Franklin County oyster landings, the green is the, the rest of the state. So you can just see how much of a cornerstone Franklin County oysters were for the entire state's fishery, and then unfortunately, from 2013 on, we did see that steep decline. So I'm, I'm not gonna get too heavy on data, except for this slide. I am a scientist by trade, so this is gonna be a heavy slide here, but I'm gonna walk everyone through it. So on the X-axis, on the bottom, are the dates, we go back from 2015 until last year. Our scientists, based out of East Point, do surveying across the entire bay, both in the spring and in the fall. So on the Y-axis, going up there on the lap, on the left, is the average legal-sized oysters that they are seeing in their surveys. Those lines, the different colors, the red, yellow, green, as well as the purple, are different, um, benchmarks that we look to hit, primarily from the FDAC's, uh, agriculture guidelines. So, starting with the red and going up, the red is a hundred bags an acre, at that point, we consider that reef to be severely depleted. Anything below that is extremely depleted. Moving our way up, yellow, two hundred bags an acre, we can start to look to have some type of limited harvest opening. Um, skipping the purple and going up to the green, green means go. Green, we have four hundred bags an acre on that reef, we are seeing, um, efforts to where we can have sustainable harvest present. That three hundred has been floated around both in FWC and other, um, agencies, to where it's kind of a happy medium between that green and yellow. But as you can see from the bars there, from the surveying that we are seeing from our researchers, we're not even seeing a hundred bags an acre. The, the best we're seeing is, um, you know, twenty-ish, thirty-ish, um, and as you can see, from 2015 all the way down to 2020, we did see that steep decline. Since we've closed it, since 2020, we have started to see a little bit of an uptick, but we haven't seen the progress, um, as much as we had hoped, but it is still progress.
Can you give me that number again?
Sorry, sir?
That number you just said?
Yes, so we're, we're seeing, uh, most of these surveys, uh, anywhere from twenty to thirty, uh, bags an acre on some of these reefs. So this is just some, uh, additional text based off some of the, uh, the survey trends that we're seeing. So we were contracted with the University of New Hampshire to come down and do a lot of the mapping of the reefs. It's very important that we know the current state of the reefs in regarding to not only size, but also height, so we have a good idea of what we're seeing, um, in Appalachia right now. That mapping, along with some of the ground truthing that our scientists are doing from East Point, shows that there's approximately two thousand acres of oyster habitat in Apalachicola Bay. However, most of that two thousand acres is so severely depleted that it cannot support oyster populations at this time. Uh, but the progress that we are seeing, like I said, we're seeing a little bit of an uptick, not as much as we had hoped, but we are seeing some promise. Uh, the promise is in the east and the central sides of the bay, where recent restoration has been ta, taking place in the last few years. So it's as expected, where you restore the bay, you start to see some promise. Um, and those areas in the east and central sides of the bay likely represent the core of the current oyster populations in Appalachia. Um, so since 2015, a lot of that restoration money that's been going to the bay is approximately five point eight million dollars in Deepwater Horizon oil spill funds, and that's gone to restore approximately four hundred acres, uh, of oyster reefs in Appalachia. But to date, we've only seen about fifty-six acres that are hitting that benchmark, to where we could see some type of sustainable harvest possible. So, um, I was talking to my neighbor about this, he's a big oyster guy up in Tallahassee, he likes to eat them, that's about all he knows about oysters, but he's a football guy, and I know we just had the football coach come out here, so what I explained to him is fifty-six acres out of two thousand acres means we are on the three-yard line, we are seeing three percent of oyster habitat, that is sustaining oysters currently. We're at the three-yard line, going the long way. So we are seeing some promise, we're seeing a little bit, but we have a long ways to go until we hit a touchdown. So we're seeing promise, but it's not as much as we had hoped, it's not as quickly as we hoped.
How long it long?
Sorry?
How long is long?
So that, that, I'll, I'll touch on more in this presentation, 'cause we are starting to see that promise, so a lot of this funding that we do have with our funding partner, NIFWIF, is going towards restoration, to where hopefully we can kinda get a snowball effect going, to where we can see more promise, and that'll, uh, that'll speed up here in the next year or so, when, when we start putting material out, but I, I will get to that here in a few slides. But some considerations, 'cause I know there have been some talk about opening these fifty-six acres to a type of limited harvest. So this data that I'm presenting here is really hot off the press, um, right from our researchers here in East Point. Um, so some considerations that we need to take into account, that if harvest were to reopen, it might not only delay the implementation, but also the success of this current NIFWIF project that I'm gonna be hitting on here in a few slides. Um, as well as the commercial tonguing, um, on those restored areas, um, could also undo some of these recent gains that we have been seeing. So the removal of the oysters and the harvest, um, as well as the habitat degradation from the tonguing, um, would likely increase the time needed to see some real success. We really need this fifty-six acres to continue to populate the rest of the bay. So if we open that area even to a limited type of harvest, it could really damage, uh, any of the progress that we see moving forward. So, moving forward, the program that I am running, uh, like John mentioned, I'm the Principal Investigator, uh, with this grant, um, it is with NIFWIF, which is the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, so if I say NIFWIF, that's just our funding partner for this program, um, it's just a hair over twenty million dollars in total, this program. It's focusing on two areas, both Appalachia, as well as Suwannee Sound, so we have two major objectives with this program, oyster restoration, and to develop local, stakeholder-informed, regionally-specific oyster management plans. But I wanna be clear, that all restoration funding is one hundred percent for Appalachia. We are not doing any restoration work in Suwannee with these funds. I, I know some public stakeholders at some other workshops talked about, are you guys doing fifty-fifty Appalachia and Suwannee? No. All restoration effort is being done here in, in Apalachicola. Um, we're having, we have multiple partnerships, I know Sandra Brooke, uh, with Florida State ABD comes and gives talks, um, so we are working with Florida State, as well as the University of Florida, multiple state agencies, um, that have their hands i, in this work as well, but I think it's also important to, um, acknowledge public stakeholders. I wanna make sure that the local oystermen here in Franklin County have a seat at the table, they are listened to, and they are involved in every decision-making process of this work. I think it's very important, I'm gonna sound like a broken record throughout this presentation, but public stakeholder engagement, um, is extremely important to me throughout this program. So it's really broken up into two stages, I'm gonna just quickly hit on this first stage, um, it's about three point two million dollars. Um, so these bullets here that you see there, they comprise a lot of the deliverables that we have for this first stage. So data collection, uh, we have our researchers out from East Point on the water, as well as in the water, collecting data. Like I said, we had the University of New Hampshire, who is helping out with a lot of our mapping work. We wanna get a good baseline of where we are at, you know, time zero, so when we do start to see those restoration, um, successes happen, we can see how much we've progressed. So it, it's really important to know where we are and get a very strong baseline of the current state, um, of Appalachia. The harvest management system, like I said, one major cornerstone of this project is to listen to the stakeholders, to make sure that we develop an Apalachicola Bay oyster fishery management plan that works for both the oysters and for the oystermen. It needs to, it needs to work for both and be sustainable for both, or else we're gonna be right here in the, in the same spot as we are now, you know, X number of years from now. We're compiling a lot of the information, so there's been a lot of restoration work that's been done by multiple state agencies in the past, we need to learn from that. What worked, what didn't work, so we're as informed as we can be when we start putting material out there. Uh, and then we're gonna have data, as well as habitat restoration workshops, where we get everyone in together, talk about what's worked and what hasn't worked, and how we need to progress with our Stage Two, which is putting stuff out in Apalachicola Bay, starting meaningful, large-scale oyster restoration. So a lot of these questions here are, um, were discussed at the workshops, the where, what, how high, and how much, so we have the best plan of attack moving forward for meaningful oyster restoration in Appalachia. And then, of course, our researchers here in East Point, we're gonna be doing the monitoring and the surveying, which will help inform management moving forward. So we did have those data, uh, and restoration workshops in the summer and fall of this past year, where we did have a lot of secondary stakeholders, which are those universities, as well as those state management agencies, got everyone in a room, locked the door, and said, "We're not leaving until we make some meaningful discussions, um, and some progress here." So we did talk about a lot of those what, where, how high, and how much. So our funding partner, NIFWIF, um, has expressed concerns over approving the remaining amount of money right now for restoration activities, and it's primarily because a lot of those past restoration operations that occurred in the bay did not really perform as well as expected. We had hoped for, you know, this many oysters, but we really only got this many oysters. Um, so it really boils down to, there's a large number of unknowns still present. I know, um, the, uh, the board has, has chatted with Sandra Brooke a lot, a lot about their, um, their pilot studies and all their studies, so I'm saying what works, what doesn't work, um, which is extremely beneficial to our work moving forward. So a compromise that we had with NIFWIF is to perform a large-scale pilot study. FSU is also gonna continue conducting complementary studies, uh, and then our FWRI people will be conducting, uh, the oversight on the sampling and monitoring of our pilot study, utilizing primarily our work, as well as FSU's, uh, ABD's work. Um, FWC will have more data to construct and perform larger restoration activity moving forward. So to kinda put it in a little bit of a workflow on how I anticipate this work going, we have Florida State, and we have FWC, we are gonna be conducting our pilot studies, I'll provide some more information on our specific pilot study here in a few slides, but we're gonna put the stuff in the water, we're gonna gather results, we're gonna be very upfront, uh, and transparent with, you know, elected officials, public stakeholders, other state management agencies, um, at that point, we'll get together, we'll talk about what worked, what didn't work. Uh, the nuclear option, nothing works, there's no oysters. At that point, we, we need to regroup with everyone, our funding partner, um, public stakeholders, et cetera, but like I said, we've started to see that uptick, I really don't think this is going to be an issue. I, this is, again, this is the red nuclear button, and I don't think we're gonna have to press that. So at this point, we are seeing promise, we'll take the best from both projects, we'll kinda Frankenstein together, um, a large-scale restoration work, based off of what worked, what didn't work with the pilot studies. At that point, we're gonna put all of our eggs into one basket, move forward with large-scale restoration. So two main things will kind of spin off of this, pros and cons for future restoration activities. I think we can all agree, this project is twenty million dollars, this is not going to fix the bay one hundred percent, it's gonna kinda be that first domino to fall on some meaningful, successful oyster restoration. But what I really hope is this provides a blueprint or recipe, so if there's additional funding down the road, they can go, "Hey, that FWC project that they did, that worked really well, let's springboard off of that and continue to see some of the promising results." And then obviously, the other thing that's gonna spin off of that, it's gonna inform us on the management, um, options for when we're ready to open the bay. So, a little bit on our pilot study here, we're gonna be testing two different treatments, reef height and material size. These are two things that are very important for oyster restoration, and more importantly, they're things that we don't quite understand the best plan of attack on large-scale restoration, which is why we wanna test these two things. So we're gonna look at two treatments and two different types of the treatment, low and high reef height, as well as small and large Florida limestone. The location is gonna be on the east side of Appalachia, that's where we have been seeing those promising results, um, so far, and there's scientific consensus that you wanna focus your restoration just next door to where you're seeing oyster populations, to kinda get that spillover effect and see more, uh, promising results from your restored areas. The reef size are gonna be approximately one acre, so while I say this is a pilot study, this is a large-scale pilot study, we're not doing this, anything in the size of like a driveway or so, we're, we're doing a square acre, to where we are gonna be able to see some, uh, some real large-scale benefits, uh, to this study. And to make sure that it is scientifically, uh, sound, uh, we're gonna have multiple replicas, so anywhere from five to seven, based off of, uh, budget. So the monitoring criteria, this is really for our researchers, um, this just shows that they're gonna be in the water, as well as on the water, and they're also gonna be do, doing mapping of the recently restored areas, to make sure that we are collecting as much data as we can to inform us moving forward. So overall, this project is gonna cost just under seven million dollars, uh, and it provides not only a scientifically sound study, but also a fiscally responsible study. Um, our funding partner has, um, given us the preliminary, uh, green light for this study, I'm actually gonna be submitting our final proposal, uh, and amendment to our funding partner here this week or next week, and it will produce approximately twenty-four acres of treated oyster habitat. So some of the next steps that we have, um, we have been conducting outreach, primarily with, uh, the cab, doing some oyster workshops, as well as some community workshops, there is potential for some additional FWC-focused outreach events here in the new fu, uh, in the near future, but a lot of the feedback we have been, uh, including into, um, our plans moving forward. Uh, we'll obviously, uh, continue both internal and external coordination in drafting our design, but like I said, it's ninety-nine percent ready to go, uh, we plan on submitting to, uh, NIFWIF, our funding partner, like I said, this week or next week. Um, at that point, the design, the methods, as well as the, our budget, um, will obviously be publicly available for review, and we do submit to NIFWIF, uh, and ultimately, the goal is to have a contractor signed and material in the water there in Appalachia. Um, I said the summer, but I think we might be able to even hit the spring, that, you know, there is a little bit of, uh, hurdles, you have to, uh, jump with the competitive solicitation process, um, but so far, everything is a go, so as long as we don't meet any logistical hurdles, or have, um, you know, knock on wood, an early hurricane, we should be good to go, to have everything completed by the summer of next year. Uh, so in conclusion, we have approximately twenty million dollars for preliminary data gathering and analyses, uh, obviously the restoration efforts here in Apalachicola Bay, and then to have those stakeholder-informed, regionally-specific oyster management plans to be, uh, developed. Um, like I mentioned, although the past restoration efforts that have been done in Appalachia didn't really meet their biological objectives, um, there's still helpful takeaways from all of them, and they really do provide a roadmap on what to do and what not to do moving forward with our restoration work. Uh, so we will be doing this, uh, large-scale pilot study, testing multiple reef types and material sizes, like I said, the process is already started, but we hope to have it completed, um, and material in the water, um, here in the next seven or six months. Um, and of course, it will inform us on moving on to even larger-scale restoration shortly thereafter. And then something I always like to finish all my presentations to, is that successful oyster restoration here in Apalachicola Bay, um, is really on, only gonna be possible through the culmination of not only work from the secondary stakeholders, those universities and state management agencies, but again, make sure that every local oysterman has a seat at the table, their voice is heard, they are listened to, and they are included in every developmental step of this program. Um, so, I wanna conclude, I, I know, I'm sure you guys have some questions, um, my contact info's there, I know Mr. Marone has been chatting with, uh, Mr. Creamer, um, by all means, I, I know we've taken, um, Commissioner Ward out, um, on the bay, I'm more than happy to take any of you guys out, we can look at the good, the bad, the ugly, when we do start some of these deployment, um, operations next year, we, we will certainly provide you guys with the schedule, if you guys wanna bring a boat out, or come on one of our boats to really see a lot of this material, uh, going forward. But, uh, I know the FSU has kind of taken the spotlight and doing a lot of the outreach and communication, and I think rightly so, FWC needs to take that spotlight back, since we are the man, management agency, so, um, if you guys want me to come monthly, quarterly, whenever we do hit a, a milestone, um, uh, we can be with, uh, in chat with Mr. Marone, um, and be as transparent as possible to your, to the board, so thank you.
Mr. Turner?
I thought I'd been in the city. Uh, it's not my first rodeo to see a, a base dead and sick like it is. But y'all got, how many agents do y'all got working out there, besides you?
Yes, so we have mainly some of, FSU is doing a lot of the work right now, FWC, when we get this restoration work, we're gonna kinda be, uh, the primary, uh, agency in the water. Um, I know DEP is doing a lot of their work, um, as well as, uh, FDAC's, um, is obviously an important player in there as well. Uh, but in regards to funding, you know, we have both federal and state funding opportunities, so that, there are a lot of chefs in the kitchen, um, but fortunately, um, I'm kinda used to that with a lot of my projects, so I think communication is the first and second and third most important things, to make sure everyone's on the same page, and I think even though there was a little bit of shakiness when I took over this position, and we were making sure everyone was in place, um, I think we're on the right track moving forward.
Well, what I see is... Ain't the University of Florida in there, too?
Yes, so they're primarily doing a lot of, um, stakeholder engagement, so, and most of their efforts are focused down in Suwannee Sound, but they will be working a little bit in Appalachia as well.
But you got five or six chefs, as you call them, and the chefs getting paid in my, my, right here, can't pay their light bill, they ain't getting nothing.
And, and I know a lot of people have been talking about, you know, the bay needs to be open ASAP. Like, come on, come on. So right now, a lot of our focus is on getting this restoration up and running. But as soon as that is done, we will start moving these management systems to the front burner. Right now, we can't say, you know, when it will be open. Right now, it's set to open January 1st, 2026. If we are seeing promising results from this pilot study and we have the opportunity to open earlier, by all means, we will jump on that.
With them numbers you just gave, I don't think it need to be open because you are, you're right. You ain't gonna do nothing but catch up. That little bit you got out there. But I, I don't think, it don't take five years for an oyster to grow. I done seen it done in two.
Exactly. And-
If you don't mind, I was at that ABD meeting and I didn't get to see y'all had a commission meeting, obviously. I think where Commissioner Lockley's coming in is we've been, and I told them that, you know, there, that we've been at this flatline before. And it was 85, 86. And I even asked them, I said, what department would, would the state handle the 85, 86 restoration? And the room got silent. Nobody could answer. And so I, you know, redirected the question. I said, what department had handled it? Well, it was DNR. Well, the DNR dissolved. And I said, well, what, you know, where did everybody go? I mean, obviously the state and then just, so I understand what happened. People went in with DEP, some went into DAX and so forth and so forth. But my big question was, is where's the data from, from 40 years ago? Because, and, and nobody has an answer. I mean, if we, we've seen this happen before. You know, they restored, they shelled the bars. You know, we didn't create habitat. We, they reshelled what was there. You know, I'm not sure exactly the people that were, that were involved with that as far as the state. I imagine most of them are retired or probably have went even further. But, uh, but, but getting back to it, that, that's, that's the frustration on our part. We're three years into a five-year closure and we hadn't even got material on the bars yet.
Exactly. Yeah.
And, and that was, when I was sitting there, it kind of blew my mind. I mean, you know, you, you know, and the thing is, is this is like with Florida State, for instance, we're going out and we're creating foundation. Now, we're beside a natural bar, but we're going out in this soft spot. We're creating foundation. We're putting, we're, we're putting material on it. And then we're wondering why it's not growing. Well, that's easy. If God wanted oysters over there, that bar would do this. You follow me?
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, that, I mean, and that's when I was asking them, what variable are we missing with this? Because if you try to create habitat where habitat never was, I mean, there's flows. There's obviously a reason why that's not a bar naturally. But why aren't we not concentrating more on a natural bar and, you know, put material there? You know, because back then, we was only, what? We was like a little over a year and a half with that program and we were back. And then we had check stations in and, you know, everybody wants to argue about a check station, but like I told them at the meeting, 80% is better than 0% as far as accountability goes. But, you know, you had $10, what was $20 a bag, $10 a bag limit fish Monday through Friday. Back then in 90, 89, 90, you know, potential to make $1,000 a week. Man, it was a gold rush, you know? I mean, honestly, uh, so you, we, we have frustration because we understand you guys know the science part of it, but we know the base side of it. You know, everybody's lived here. And we're, you know, we're, I mean, go on social media, you see treetops that's just hanging there with oyster spats in the bay. But that spat's not going to attach if there's not material on the bar.
Exactly.
So, you know, that's where I think everybody that's here is like, what's going on?
Yeah. And, and so a lot of that mapping data that the University of New Hampshire, I mean, that was worth its weight in gold to be able to provide, like you said, where's the good habitat and where's the bad habitat? So they even broke it down and said, this is all of our mapping data. These spots, mud, don't touch it. Green spots, we are seeing oysters. That's a spot to, you know, you know, like I said, go next door to that. And then they even gave us some yellow spots, said this is hard bottom. So this is a historical bar, but we see no oysters. So it could be prime for restoration. Because like you said, we don't want to put all of our money into mud and go, well, where'd everything go? So with this mapping data, we not only know where the mud is, but we know where the oysters are, and we know where there is habitat that is prime for restoration. And that mapping data, I mean, like I said, I would kiss that guy on the cheek if I saw him, because that information is so beneficial.
We're back at the same thing, though. Why haven't we got material on those natural bars that are already a natural foundation for oyster habitat? I mean, that's what that, I mean, that's, that's where nature put it there. You know, why, why aren't we going back, just like we did 40 years ago, and putting that material right back where nature intended it to be? You see, that's, that's the frustrating thing that I can't understand. And, and trust me, I'm, I want to have a great working relationship with y'all. You can ask the one beside you right there, you know?
Yeah.
It'll be family trouble. But, but what I'm getting at is, is, uh, we, it's frustrating. And, and the fact that when I sit there in an ABD, and I'm not, you know, I'm not, I'm going to be very active with that going forward. But I've just got questions. Going back to that restoration 40 years ago, is there any way that you guys within the state can reach into other departments and say, hey, where's this data? Where's this stuff at? Can we go back and see what worked? There may be a variable that we're missing now that they, you know, or something may have changed.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because it just, I mean, we're throwing a lot of money at this, and we're three years into it. And, uh, you know, understand that's, that's federal money and state money and all that, but that's still our, our bay and our livelihood. The state owns that bay, but that's the bay that, that, that people have fed their children for generations on. Why are we reinventing the wheel, so to speak, you know?
Right. So to kind of peel back on, on the current timeline and how we got to where we are right now, COVID, I don't want to use as a scapegoat, but it really delayed a lot of the mapping efforts, which we really needed to see what's out there in regards to habitat. You know, we can certainly go, this is where oysters are based on tonguing, but if you can side scan and map out the bay, you can get a much larger picture very quickly. We got that data early 2022. So with that data, we've now been, like I said, talking to a lot of state agencies. We haven't gone as far back as you were mentioning, but it's certainly something to look into. Because like you said, there may be a variable that some of the researchers are missing. So I do think that's very important.
Just to give you some history on that, that's what I told them. You know, they had the graph and all that, and we just went flatline. And, you know, it was always, it was leading up to what, where we're at now. And we understand that part of it. I mean, some of us probably understand a little more than others. But, but the simple fact, just like I told them, I said, you know, this wasn't a trend over the years like we see now. I mean, this, this was life-changing over a weekend. I mean, we went strictly flat. After Elena came in, I think 70 to 80% of the beds were just destroyed, covered completely dead. And then Kate came in with a month later and cleaned up the other 25%. And then, uh, obviously, you know, people went back to work and whatever, the last five little bit percentage of it got caught up. So we went, I mean, we've, we've been here before.
Right.
This, this isn't, you know, uncharted waters for us.
Exactly.
As the community goes. But obviously, there's been a breakdown with communication within the state going back, you know, some odd years ago. Now, I understand, you know, FWC wasn't even into it at the time. But I mean, there's got to be something that you guys can go back and research and say, hey, this is how they did it, you know, 40 years ago and kick, you know, knock it out the park, whatever, you know? But, uh, and, and some other things. The public stakeholder thing that you said earlier, how are, how are you planning on bringing the public in? Because obviously, y'all have a huge cap to bridge right here as far as the, the public goes.
Sure.
You know, obviously, being on a campaign, I have, I've, I've heard, heard a bunch, but.
Well, as Devin indicated before, FSU's kind of in the lead up to this point. We haven't really done our due diligence to be out in front as a lead agency because we have control of the bay, whether to open or close it. Going forward, we plan to do more workshops with the oystermen and with the community. We've used this process in the past with Redfish, with the Indian River Lagoon, Suwannee Sound, so forth. These workshops, we allow people to come in, the community, they own their own voice, they can tell us their concerns. And then we would like to have specific workshops with the oysterman. We try to do the, we plan to try to do these fairly frequently. We don't want to have a gap in time where we can keep people informed of what's occurring and how we can move forward. I think the next major milestone will probably be June of 2023, once the product is in the water. I think that's a good time to start those workshops, probably prior to then, to let people know how things are progressing. And then probably come back to this board as well as updating.
Well, looking, the University of Florida done this here back then in the eighties. Everything y'all do, they done been there and done that. And why y'all can't have a roundtable, get together with all them people, what you, you said, the chefs, and let the chefs, the county, and the seafood workers sit down and listen at y'all, like y'all made y'all presentation. They make their presentation. But all we hear now is a different presentation. One, they won't get together. I mean, some, a lot of this stuff been done. Well, I put it this way, a lot of this stuff been paid for a long time ago. And it just reoccurred. Nothing happened. It, it's either going to be fixed or unfixed. They were hollering in the water at first. No fresh water. Well, since Georgia beat them, they done turned around now and y'all saying something else. I mean, they dumping, you, you listening at the wrong people. They, they come out here and you, you got a navigation system, they putting, they come down here and put a whole boatload of water, or, or the stuff y'all were going to plant. They put it in the mud. It's something.
And that mapping data, I mean, not to sound like a broken record, but that mapping data, like I said, is, is going to be instrumental in not only this pilot study restoration, but also the larger scale restoration moving forward. And in regards to, you know, getting all the chefs in, in a room and letting them cook, one deliverable that we do have with our funding partners, after this pilot study goes with FSU's, we get together with FSU and says, what worked, what didn't work? We have a multi-day workshop budgeted here in Franklin County with secondary stakeholders and the primary stakeholders to get in a random room and say, you know, we're going to be doing a lot of this updating with the public with this pilot study, but say, it's done, the report's done. This is how we plan on moving forward with all of our eggs in one basket for a large scale restoration. Management options are going to continue to be discussed. So the, the public will be not only aware, but allowed to provide feedback and, and, you know, massage the, the project as needed before we do that large scale restoration. That, that is on the books with our funding partner to conduct before we move forward with the large scale restoration.
You could have went and got some of them old oystermen. You wouldn't have needed to done that map. They'd have took you out there and they know their whole thing. In France.
I want to add, Mr. Lockley or Commissioner Lockley, I appreciate your comments. As Commissioner Amson pointed out, we've had several agencies diverge from DNR years ago, and some of that information has been lost. We have had meetings in Tallahassee with everyone sitting at the table, somewhere around 30, 40 people in the room, starting that dialogue of how things worked in the past. Going forward with the second stage, that mapping, like you said, is crucial. We're putting these restoration projects on old existing bars. The challenge we have here in Florida, it's throughout the state, we're seeing it in multiple areas. There's 23 million people here now, 1,000 people moving a day. There's water quality issues. There's a lot of unknowns going on, as Devin had pointed out in his presentation. The desire from us is we wish we were under large scale restoration right now for the whole bay. But we just haven't been able to make things work. Now, we're determined to make them work. We see that promise with that 56 acres. Again, we're putting our money in the best areas of the bay, working with the best agencies and university partners that we have now. Again, we want to keep you informed going forward. But again, we do have hope. We feel like we're moving in the right direction, and we do believe we will get there.
Mr. Chairman, I've got some comments. So I did go out with Devin and John, Shannon Hartsfield and Dr. Sandra Brooke to the East Point areas where they planted substrate. And just give a quick update, Devin, if you can, on the substrate. I'll be honest with you, I, I wasn't impressed with what I saw. However, that being said, I told you, John, and I think the reason why you guys are here today, because y'all are the bad guys. I hate to say it, but I told you that. A lot of our oystermen and women that work on the water, that know this bay like the back of their hand, have felt like they have not been able to interact and give their opinions and their updates and what they feel like is best for the bay. And I, I want you guys to be more communicative with us. I've told you, John and Devin, that I think that the failure of communication, it's been two years now since the bay's been closed, correct? And this is, I think, the first time, to my knowledge, that you guys have come and presented to the board. And I know that Dr. Brooke has been here and presented from the ABD side. But I want you guys to start giving us more updates on things so that we can tell our constituents and explain to them what's going on and what you guys have been doing. Now, the substrate that I saw was the big size lime rock, small size lime rock, and the fossilized shell, correct? And of those, then, correct me if I'm wrong, Devin, I believe it was the larger sized lime rock substrate that was growing more oysters. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. All right. So I appreciate you guys coming. I feel like this is something that should continue on the agenda more often to keep us and our public informed. Because like Commissioner Lockley and Commissioner Amson said, these are our people that have worked the water their whole life. They want to get back on the, the water and work. Personally, I would love to have a wild harvested Apalachicola, Apalach, excuse me, Apalachicola oyster to eat, and, and sooner than later, to be honest. I know right now, it's, what I saw, it's not conducive. And I don't want to go out and, and hurt the bay even more than what it is. But fact of the matter remains, we do have people that need to get out there and get back to work as soon as possible.
Absolutely. And to kind of springboard off of that, I mean, I do appreciate you coming out, obviously. We have been getting that from some stakeholders, saying, you know, those 56 acres, those are prime and ready to go right now. And it's very hard for us to go, there's a little bit out there, but hold back. But like you said, it, that 56 acres could get wiped out very quickly. And then we would be even in a worse spot, you know, the day after. So we are seeing promise, and I'm very excited for that. And a lot of that data that you did see from Florida State is being incorporated into our pilot study. Basically, this pilot study is to turn as many unknowns into knowns moving forward. So when we are ready, again, for the large scale restoration, put all of our millions into one bucket and do some restoration, we are as informed as possible. And obviously, our funding partner wants to make sure we're as informed as possible. I don't know anyone, part, funding partner or millionaire who will say, here's $20 million, go have fun. They want to make sure that we're doing it in a scientifically sound manner. And I think with this pilot study, as well as Florida State's pilot studies, we are achieving that goal.
And Mr. Chairman, Devin, just to, to, so that the public will know, I believe we went to what, three or was it four or five different sites?
Yes, primarily.
They are studying? And the only, I think it was, what, 30 oysters total that were of legal size that we found with all those, within all those areas?
Right. Right. I don't know. I know both Sandra, as well as Shannon, were kind of quickly incorporating how many tongs it would take to get to a, you know, a bucket. I don't remember that. But we were not seeing positive results. We're seeing a little bit, but not to the, to the stages that we were hoping.
Just, just for my clarity, now, the, the sites that you, that y'all took Commissioner Ward to now, were those FSU sites? Were this the sites that you guys planted on natural bottom?
Yes. So, so these were both. But a lot of the work that even FSU, some of the sites we took Commissioner Ward to, they were all on hard bottom. But some of them were Florida State sites, some of them were FWC.
I understand they were on hard bottom, but were on naturally hard bottom? Or is this bottom that y'all had, or Florida State or whoever had, had, had created?
It was natural. It was.
That's where most of the restoration efforts are occurring, is natural bottom.
But like you mentioned, unfortunately, some of the sites were put in less than ideal conditions and were either lost to the currents or lost to the mud.
And I, I will give you a little more tidbit of information, you know, talking about stakeholder input and all. You got a vast knowledge, you know? There's, there's plenty of Commissioner Lockley's out there that's his age, that, that Buddy Wayne Butler. He, I, I didn't know this till the other day, but they, they planted Shellis's lease. Everybody knows, everybody's familiar with Shellis lease down there. This has been going back, what, 50, maybe 50 years ago, when, when Granddad had the lease. He had Mr. Butler and all them. They cut oak trees down. That's what they planted the bar with, was oak trees. I was like, it kind of threw me off. But I mean, it, it's, it's not rocket science. I mean, all you got to do is go to that causeway and run your hand up and down, throw a cast net down the side of that causeway. We've got spats in the bay, but if we don't get material out there, and that's, that's the thing that worries me, because right now, we're, we're great as far as our, our salinity, as far as I, you know, now, I hadn't done a salinity test. This is just, you know, I know we've had a wet season, everything, everything is primed perfectly-
Right.
-for a good growing season. We have a great growing potential winter right here. But the only problem is, we don't have material out there. Now, see, you're dealing with nature. So next year, when we do get material down, you know, here we, here goes another variable. And I hate being the devil's advocate, but the sooner we, we need to get some material out there, or you guys do, as quickly as possible. Because, I mean, COVID or no COVID, we're three years, this is, this is year three. And, you know, it just doesn't, I mean, and honestly, when- And, uh, you know, I, it just doesn't, I mean, and honestly, when I, when I seen the projections last week, you know, everything I'm looking at, it's a ten-year projection. And I'm thinking, man, it was supposed to be five, you know. I honestly wanted to go get on antidepressants and jump off the roof when I left that meeting last week. That's one thing I will say, at least you have an, an optimistic outlook on it. Uh, and it's promising, because, you know, it, it's hard to sit there and say, well, this will never happen, this won't work, it's not gonna be sustainable. Shellfish, uh, ecosystems just eventually die off and stuff like that, and I'm like, no, dude, if it was gonna die off, it would die off, uh, forty years ago. So, I mean, we can grow oyster, we just gotta have the material put out there for the oysters to start growing.
Absolutely.
And, and.
And, and like I mentioned, I mean, I, I'm, I've done pretty well with the other programs. If I did not see promise in this, I would go update my resume and start looking for other jobs, but I really.
And, and I appreciate, that's why I pointed that out, because, uh, I wouldn't exaggerate in about the roof. Um, you know, at least somebody, and then that's, that's what we gotta do, we gotta bridge that gap between our community and you guys, you know, I mean, that's gonna be a hard one. Uh, I don't know, you know, but, but I got faith in you on that part, but, but, uh, it, it's, it is discouraging after you sit there and you go, you're in three years into it. And that's our job as, as representatives to go back and explain this to our constituents or everybody around here, and, uh, and, and, you know, we got to have a working relationship with you guys. Um, that's not, that's why, that's why we don't need pitchforks and torches coming up here, but, uh, but we, we, we need more communication going forward.
Well, to tack on to that, and what Ms. Ward said that day we were out, I, I agree with you, and we will. I think we need to be a better partner with the community moving forward. Again, I don't wanna have any family issues down here as well.
Looking, um, I'm not trying to be no clown, and I'm not just, you know, people ask me questions every day. I walk in the store, I go to Burger King, and they asking, when we going to fish, when, when y'all, what, what y'all gonna do? I said, well, we can't do nothing, that's state bait, uh, it's up to them. But another thing I need to actually, if you do all this work, and what y'all doing, and I believe you'll find a solution, you need to. People just need to work now, and that's why everybody is hurt. But once you find it, y'all need to think about, I have a, you haven't said nothing about how it's gonna continue, 'cause nobody talking about the re-shelling, like, the DNR, they used to replant. But now, they done, they done sold that board, and I don't know what, what y'all gonna do with that situation, but if you do all this, it's just like going to your icebox. Go in there, taking stuff out, and ain't putting nothing back, it's gonna get empty again.
Right.
And we're gonna be in the same.
It, it's on the table, uh, we're certainly talking about that. I think there is consensus that that is needed, you can't keep cutting checks and not make any deposits, or else something's gonna bounce.
Right.
So I, I do think that that is very important, so, um, like I said, on the front burner right now is getting this pilot study up and running, get some material out there, 'cause like you said, it's prime right now for some material. So the sooner we get some stuff out there, the better, um, but that is certainly being discussed in those management options on, you know, look, not only talking about how it could be done logistically, 'cause like you said, everything's been sold, so it'd be quite a bit of process to get that logistical, uh, ball rolling, but also the funding. We're, we're pursuing different types of avenues for, uh, funding that as well, but it's certainly on the table, and, and I do think that it's very important that once we do get this open, uh, up and running, we need to be able to, to continue the fishery.
'Cause the day they open it, they gonna be getting them, and we ain't got no replacement.
Devin, I'm gonna throw you a lifeline here, uh, and, and I'm a new commissioner, so I don't know what side the sunshine shines on, so I don't wanna violate any sunshine at all.
Oh, you probably.
But, but, no, I'm talking about after I left that meeting, I wanted to call every one of them and say, well, this is, you know, but I don't, but obviously, I'm, I'm, I'm treading in those waters, I don't know what I can, can't do, and this may help you. There is, uh, there is talks about, uh, moving forward, once we get a product, or once we get a, a, a resource back, let me rephrase that. But once we get a resource back, there is discussion already as far as like a limited entry, which I completely am opposed, but we can save that to when we get to, we'll, we'll have that fight later, so to speak. But, uh, uh, you know, and, and, and the state is gonna have to, uh, have a viable role in, in the conservation of it, obviously, and, and all of that, the accountability, um, you know, going back, you know, if we have a magic crystal ball here and we can say, okay, we get, you know, five years, whatever year, two years, we're back, we need those check stations in. Obviously, that funding is gonna have to come from within somebody's department at state level, uh, most likely FWC might be an enforcement issue or whatnot, but, but that, that, those discussions are being had. Uh, I just don't, I, I think the reason why we're not hearing it as, as far as right now, number one, you know, uh, we, we, we just not there, uh, as far as, but, but it is something that they're already, I mean, they have models, and they're putting in, you know, you know, bag limits, they're putting in this, they're putting in that, and, and, uh, if, if I could've called you Wednesday night, we could've told you. But, uh, but what I'm saying is, is that, that stuff is there, it, it, those, those, they've already got foresight on that, but, uh, but that, I believe that's gonna, like I said, that'll be a battle down the road that we'll, we'll have to have, so to speak.
And I do think when we are ready to have those discussions.
I just wanna have that discussion.
Absolutely, yeah, and, and we are partnering with both Florida State and UF to help us with a lot of that work, so I imagine, um, well, you know, at least our individual from UF is doing a lot of that modeling, um, as well as potentially someone from FSU to also, you know, so you hear it straight from the source, that I'm not giving the presentation, I'll hand it off to them, and we can really talk about, um, not only what the public, what do the models think, et cetera. Um, but you're right, that's on the back burner right now, we are having those discussions, it's simmering, as soon as that restoration start, um, is in the water and soaking, we're gonna swap that, and we're gonna really dive into the management options.
Sir, you don't need no mala, you need to start piling up some shells.
Right.
Or whatever you gonna replace it with.
Yeah.
That mala ain't gonna not gonna help you. I mean, that's what you need, I mean, that's what they had, and that's what they got to do.
Mr. Chairman, can I pop in a little?
Yes, you sure can.
I've sat here and listened to everything, and
Yes, ma'am.
you are truly right, and I can remember when Elena come by, not one time, but two times, and then November Kate come by and finished destroying it. The one thing that's different now than what it was back then, is when they barged the stuff in to use as substrate, it was oyster shell. And they were barging them from Louisiana, Mississippi, Alabama, you remember Mr. Noah? And that's what grew to. What I'm concerned with, I sat here with the doctor the other day from FSU, I was out there as a layperson, waiting for my renewed commissionship. So that's why I called, talked to her, and she was saying, because one of the previous commissioners asked, well, how do you feel about the fossilized shell going into the bay? And she said, absolutely not. She said, the once it hit that water, it goes to sludge, mud. So be very mindful, y'all may have all good well intentions, but be careful and very mindful of what you put in that bay. That it does not destroy what we already have, because I know of some, some particular instances, back when they were shelling, they put the shell, I mean, uh, the lime rock substrate too heavy, and it killed the bar then too. So just be, all this studying that's being done, make sure that you're not gonna damage the bay by what you put in it. And, um, the first thing, when I heard it back in two thousand twenty, in July, two thousand twenty, Michael Morong can tell you, I called up, I said, what in the world? Except I said something else, what in the world is going on here? You know, and then I called Billy Sarmons, who's always been a good friend to me, uh, at FWC, the previous regional director, and I said, Billy, the first thing I have to ask y'all, overall, y'all are gonna be getting seventeen million dollars on this project at the end of it. I said, where's the economic impact study? Have y'all did an economic impact study, because our economy in Franklin County is gonna be impacted? No, somebody should've done that, then we could've kept up with it, and we would've said, hey, you know, this needs to be done a little bit quicker here, you know, and all that, but anyway, just be very mindful that we have a precious resource here, and it's not Franklin County, it's because we've been reminded that from time to time. It is the state, and be, got, got to be very careful what you put out there, because, and make sure you don't destroy what we have.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, in that, I'm gonna tell you, when I went to the ABSI meeting or the cab, I'm not sure what we're calling it, I'm, I'm still getting my toes wet, but I went in there loaded for bear, I'm not gonna lie, because I was just like you, I said, you know, why haven't we got green shells on these reefs? Bars, what we call them, and I'm going science here, why haven't we got green shells on the reefs? And, uh, and, and they took my ammo pretty quick, and the reason why is, is because you had three types of material, correct? You had the fossilized, uh, shell from here, indigenous shell, that evaporated in what, about six months, it was completely gone, then we put green shell out, and then, uh, was it about a two-year, uh, lifespan on it, and then you got the Kentucky lime rock, at that, as far as I know, still holding up to right now, we're four plus, so, yeah, I can, I can understand that. I mean, I, like I said, it, it, it diffuse my, my, my dynamite, but, but, uh, with that being said, uh, you know, I can understand, you, you know, if you're gonna build a house, you know, you want that, if you're gonna spend ten million on building a house, you want that house to be gone in two years, or do you want it there forever? So I understand the logic, and, and I will, you know, I'm, I'm a pretty straightforward, I don't, I don't, you got me on that, I mean, I sold on that one. But, uh, but just, just, just so you know, that was something I picked up on, uh, Commissioner Sanders in there, 'cause I was like you, I said, well, you know, why haven't we got green shells? But, but I will say this, going forward, you know, to, to help out what Commissioner Lockley was saying, um, the, the green shells down the road, once you're restored, that would be more appropriate time to use the shells, because you got a lot of air gaps, I call it air gaps, or columns or whatnot, it doesn't pack down, so you can go over living shell, uh, oysters and, or, you know, not, or at least get it around them, and it's, you got better.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and another reason why we're using this rock is something I didn't touch on on this presentation, is, um, we need to build the reefs back up. So a lot of the, the researchers that are in the water are saying, it looks like a parking lot, and it's as smooth as a table. So rather than using, you know, shell or something to just build up that could get swept off very quickly, 'cause I mean, the currents sometimes go ripping through that bay, so use the rock to build up, and then, like you said, then we could sprinkle on when we do, hopefully get that re-shelling program up, we could then sprinkle it on top of the, the foundation. And, and there is a scientific consensus, um, on, on that, so that's, you know, what we wanna follow.
They had, they had a hatchery right up the channel, and they moved all, that was the worst thing in the world, 'cause all that fat could've ran east and west. And they, they, it was located, it was called the cold water, right up about number nine, move it right before you get to it. And so then nobody put a mess with it, but you were got, it were working, all the year, you know, the spats were going east and west, and all, south, whatever, but it was there. And then nobody put a mess with them much, because they, they was in polluted water, I mean, but they, you could move them and put them in the good water and laid on them for so many days, then they, they can catch them, and that's what they did. But if you ain't got no babies, you ain't had no grown folk, sooner or later.
So I think some of the, the things that's been stated by our commissioners here this morning, number one being, well, what works? Uh, and I think we all know that, I think there's a, a, uh, some struggle to try to get our hands on regular shell, like what comes out of the bay, to put back in it. I will say that, uh, one of the things I mentioned to Dr. Sandra Brooke last time she was here, uh, yeah, I, the, uh, the last time the bay was depleted, it's kind of what got me out of the seafood industry, let me just put it that way. I grew up in the industry, my parents had a oyster house in a retail market, whole time I was growing up, but after those two hurricanes hit, and I just graduated high school, I'm trying to, to work and get in a bag or two a day, 'cause I'm catching legal oysters, not loading it down, uh, you know, I, I found something else to do, because I knew that it wasn't good. But there was something that worked, it did come back, uh, and one of the things that was done actually as a restoration effort out of this bay was, uh, our material, oysters, shells and all, were sold to Chesapeake up in Virginia, they bought it by the eighteen-wheeler load. Well, there's none of the problems in Chesapeake today, so why can't we use some of this money and buy some of that material back and get it back in the bay? Because if the problem's getting our hands on material, maybe we need to look for a different source. And I will say, I don't know how it would work, uh, as far as growing the oysters. I can tell you, if you're getting material that's almost a foot long, that's probably too big to tong. Unless FWC's, uh, when they do open the bay back up to allow our oystermen to use dredges, you probably don't need stuff that's a foot long, uh, just having been on the other end of those sticks before. It's not very easy, uh, it's a pretty solid job. Uh, you know, but as far as that, you know, what needs to be done, I think we're on agreement, and we know that something needs to happen, I'm not trying to hinder that in any way. But at the same time, as Commissioner Ameson said earlier, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, we know that it needs to be around, you know, we know it'll work. Uh, so those are just some of the thoughts I had thinking about this, you know, there's, there's other things, but we've already been at this a while, you know. I have expressed previously, when I was on the ABSI, uh, board, before Commissioner Ameson come along, uh, you know, it's good to have that plan developed, it's good to get everybody in the room and work it on a paper. At the end of the day, if they can't condense that booklet into two or three pages that somebody can actually take action on, it's not gonna have the desired effect. It's, it's not gonna have, be a plan that people can say, this is what we need to do, this is what the outcome we're looking for, you know, it's, 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 in some senses, it's getting a little bit too complicated. Uh, is my own personal opinion in the matter, uh, but that's not what you guys are doing, but they are advising FWC about the restoration plan, or, or the management plans. So that's the only reason I offer that input, you know, I know that in the past, they've used barges, and it's already been said, we just gotta make sure that barge is putting the material in a place that is a, is a, you know, not in the mud. And the other thing, as I, I'm still, as I've listened here this morning, uh, I'm still very adamant about the twenty twenty-five date. I don't know how to look then, but that was what was said to the people, and I really hope the FWC will stick by that. Now, as far as the twenty to thirty bags an acre, uh, I don't know which sites you're measuring, but I, I remember Mr. Resko, when we went out in the bay a while back, when Mr. Williams, I don't know if you remember it, went out there and we were tongling now, we didn't necessarily go to an FWC site or an ABSI site, we went out on the bay, historical, natural beds. And, uh, I would think, I'm no mathematician, but if you're talking about twenty or thirty bags to an acre, you're talking about two or three oysters in a tonglet. And I have pictures to show that there were more than two or three oysters in every tonglet, uh, so, you know, just the other thing that I raised, and I, and I'll relinquish what I'm saying. Talked with Representative Shuff after he went out with you guys, and he said, well, Ricky, there's three percent of the bay is what's recovered. I said, okay, fair enough, but Representative Shuff, we've never had a hundred percent oyster bars on the bay. Are you talking about three percent of the actual bars, or three percent of the total size of the bay? 'Cause they are different numbers, and he didn't know the answer to that, uh, you know what I mean, so, there, it's just different, just trying to take everything into account.
Yeah, and, and, sorry.
Oh, you're good.
Um, so on those points, in regards to the ABSI, I think they do understand that they need to distill down their reports into something that can be easily, um, read without having a PhD. Um, so I'm on the cab meeting, like I said, I, I wasn't there, 'cause I was at our FWC commission meeting, um, but I'm also on their outreach subcommittee. We've had meetings, we actually had a meeting even yesterday to say, what's the best way for ABSI, and I know I'm kind of, I have both hats on, um, that they advise me, and I'm also on the subcommittee. So we do wanna make sure that there is a clear distinction, what FWC does versus what FSU ABSI does, um, but in regards to the ABSI's work, they still need to be able to provide something that is digestible to, you know, the average guy who's reading it, um, here in Franklin County. So, um, they are working on that, and they have a few different avenues to pursue, to, like I said, make that easily, um, readable. Um, in regards to the, the locations that we did go to, so those figures were an average, but we are seeing some areas that do show good promise, those fifty-six acres. Um, I, I don't have the exact location. acres, um, I, I don't have the exact location of where we did go out with Mr. Williams, but I can almost guarantee you, it was on that fifty-six acres.
It was monkey's elbow.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and, um, in regards to the three percent, um, for, um, Representative Shuff, that is for, um, all of the natural hard bottom-
Okay.
-that we're seeing. So it's not great, but it's a whole lot better than zero, and I feel like if we did open that three percent, we could very quickly get to zero. So the three percent are, are helping us to continue sea promise, and then this restoration work, it's hopefully going to be a big shot of adrenaline to even get that going even more. So I, I, I know it's a lot of doom and gloom in this presentation, but I am hopeful moving forward. And I hope the next few, uh, meetings, uh, that I do come and present, uh, we do see the continued progress.
Well, we can only deal with things realistically, sir. You know what I mean? So sometimes we just have to be real with where we're at, and try to do our best. Uh, I will say this, just to reiterate, uh, because as some of the other commissioners said about people coming to them and ask, I'm a pretty captive audience, I'm managing auto parts, so they come into my store frequently. Uh, so there is no running or hiding. And I'll say this, just to reiterate how our people feel. There are people I know today, men that I know today, that are moving on, they're doing other things. But just as sure as the bays open back up, they'll be quitting that job, they'll be going back to oystering, because it's what they want to do, it's what they know to do, it's what they choose to do. Uh, even though it might not be the most economically feasible things for them and their family, that's the lifestyle that they want, that's the lifestyle they grew up with. So I just wanted to reemphasize that to you guys today, as I have to the cab members in the past.
I don't think y'all need to spend all that kind of money for a select few people. I mean, I think it, I hope it be able to take care of people like it was before.
In, in regards to opening the fishery?
Yeah, we're talking about limited entry.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, 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 limited, I'm not, we, as Chairman Johnson, and we will have those conversations when it comes time for the best solution.
Yeah, I think we'll find with the way things are in the state of, I mean, listen, growing up in East Point, there were over twenty oyster houses. Okay, there's one. So you're going to have-
Penny Cup was having this discussion, and he's, I said, how many people you think's actually go back oystering? And he said, oh, what the hell? Everybody wants to, we could have, everybody said, let me rephrase that, who younger than us is going to go back oystering? Because these kids won't even go to Burger King for fifteen dollars an hour. They're not going to go hit those sticks. I, I can promise you that. I've, I've, I've done it. And it's, it takes a man, it takes a man and a woman, because I've seen plenty of women out there, too. But that's a different breed, and, and honestly, I think that's kind of played its course. So I think limited entry or policies, I don't know. But, but that's, that's the discussion for now.
Any, any other questions, commissioners, comments?
I just have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
This is off of it, oyster, that's very important, but this is another comment that I want to give to Mr. John Kramer. We are being inundated with bear calls, I am, with the Landmark Village area, and the retrofitting of their garbage cans and stuff. If we can get another program that helps those people retrofit their garbage cans like it did before, a few years back, that sure would help. And so that's my last comment.
We're definitely looking into that.
And with that being said, I have a stack of tile that's going in my bathroom, and guess who's in town? We got a bear in the neighborhood. If they tear up that tile, I'm just telling Belle to call you. We got, I think, two or three of them down there now that's visiting, and, uh, I got looking ass over, but we, I'm going to leave you alone about the bear.
Maybe they'll do the type of bear that don't like tile, maybe you'll be good. Anything else from, from you guys this morning, sir?
Uh, just a commitment, we will be in touch with Mr. Morone, we will work to keep you updated, and, uh, we will be back.
All right. Thank you. We really appreciate your time.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
We're going to take a recess till, uh, ten fifty, and we'll come back, we'll do our public hearing, and then we'll come back to Mr. Walker.
Franklin County Board of County Commissioners are back in session. We're going to skip in our agenda, a couple items, and go ahead and handle the public hearing we had that was scheduled for ten thirty.
Okay. Um, this is a public hearing to consider amending the Franklin County Comprehensive Plan to add a policy that's required by the state of Florida. Um, the legislature passed, um, a bill that requires counties and local governments to add language about perils of flood. Um, we already had most of the language in there. Um, there was one, we didn't have any language about the national flood insurance programs, community rating system, so we need to add that. Community Rating System, so we need to add that. And this proposal will add a policy that says Franklin County will continue to participate in the National Flood Insurance Programs' Community Rating System and will take all reasonable steps to improve the county's rating in the community rating system. Basically, it's not going to change anything we do. We've been doing it for 25 years. We just don't have any language in our comp plan saying that.
Okay. Okay. So, public hearing, since this is a public hearing at this time, if anybody in the public wishes to comment on this potential action item, the board is considering taking today. Anybody in the public that wishes to comment? Nobody in the room? Mr. Morone, is there anybody via Zoom?
Yes, sir. Ms. Sanders, I've unmuted you. You can unmute your, on your hand, and you can address the board.
Thank you. I listened with great interest to the discussion before where the board is frustrated about its lack of power to really do anything to improve the bay. And I applaud adding anything like beefing up the flood ordinance that would improve the bay. You do have some control about what goes into the bay, and through your flood ordinances, you can keep floodwaters from running off, for example, on St. Ordonez Island. A little perturbed to hear Mark say that adding the specific language isn't necessarily going to change anything in Franklin County because it's saying you need to take all reasonable steps. I think there are reasonable steps that the county can make, can take, and would ask that you direct your staff to look at things like clearcutting of lots, filling swamps, not requiring any sort of regulation for people to raise the level of lots, and I'm primarily speaking of St. Ordonez because that's where I see things happening. So, I only wanted to tune in for the Zoom to make sure there weren't any drastic changes being made, but I see that flood issues do go in with your concerns about preserving the bay, and I would ask that you ask your staff to be more diligent about looking at the flood ordinance and filling of swamps. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. Anyone else, Mr. Morone?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioners, do any of you guys have any questions for Mr. Carrington, or I would entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, in terms of Ms. Sanders' concern, this kind of really has nothing to do with flooding in terms of the bay. This is more like for insurance policies, correct?
Correct. Well, I mean, this is, what we're doing is, the state of Florida, like I say, the legislature passed a bill saying local governments add this language to your comprehensive plan. We didn't have any language in our comprehensive plan that mentions the community rating system. Like I say, we, the county's been participating in the community rating system for like, probably about 25 years at least, and because we do certain things that are over and above the basic requirements of the flood insurance program, the county's residents get, I think it's a 15% break on their insurance policies because of that. So, this is just sort of...
This is just the formality to add the language that the Florida statute is requiring us to do.
Right.
So, I'll make a motion to approve this ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, seconded by Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It's unanimous. All right, that concludes the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Carrington. Mr. David Walker, Weems CEO.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Walker, Weems CEO. I'm here along with Tom Ramsey, Alliance Chief Financial Officer of Hospital Operations, along with some governing board members, Ms. Kristen Anderson and Ms. Murdis Winn. I'm here to talk to you and give you an update about the hospital building update. On behalf of the Weems governing board, with the rise of inflation and the rising cost of construction, the Weems Hospital Board is requesting to investigate completing our hospital renovation addition plan in phases. They would like to do the emergency department, including diagnostic and imaging services, as phase one. This is the area of the hospital that is utilized the most by our residents and visitors. This allows to use more space to serve our patients and enhance the level of emergency medical care. After phase one is completed, they were doing assessment to see what is needed for phase two. Just to give you some background on the existing hospital plan right now, the hospital plan has 10 private patient rooms, an ED, imaging suite, and it calls for to renovate dietary and dining facilities and do some mining cosmetics. So, due to the rising cost of inflation, the hospital board felt that, you know, to get something done now, you know, we need to go ahead and revise those particular plans that we have now and do a add-on, emergency room add-on to the hospital. And that would save, also keep the 25-bed designation as well, what we have here in the county. So, the plan basically is to get approval to revise the current plan that we have now. And then if that is approved, you know, we have to work probably with Mr. Morone and Ms. Griffin, you know, to look at, you know, the existing plan and see if we need to work with the existing architectures that have been working with the hospital for years. Do we need to do a RFQ to help us revise that particular plan? But the point is now that, you know, economically feasible, you know, it may be best for us to do, get something done if we want to do the, if we want to do the emergency department right now attached to the hospital with the diagnostic services. And the board chairman, Duffy Harrison, is out of town. He cannot be here. So, that's, that's the request from the hospital board.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, Mr. Walker, you and I met last week about this because I am in the healthcare field, and I realize that when we did this, this referendum for the tax to provide a new facility was back in, I believe, 2007 or 2008. And usually when we do a referendum, it's a sunset date, and there is no sunset date on this. It's been going on, 2023 will be 15 years, and I personally feel that we, and I told Michael Morone and I told you last week, and I hate to use this terminology, but we need to pee or get off the pot. I know we need healthcare in Franklin County. There's no doubt about that. Weems, my family goes there. It saved many lives in this county, so there's no doubt about that either. But the way, just like you said, inflation, the rise of inflation, the rise of cost, it is not conducive to build a whole new facility. There's just no way. So, I agree with the phases. I like that plan. Obviously, an emergency room would be first. We had an emergency out here this morning. Obviously, we have to have that capability to serve our people. In addition to that, you know, I feel like that the way the referendum should have been, and I know we can't go back, you know, let the people decide. I don't know how we could do this. Maybe do another referendum to revote on the tax. I know we've got phases here. But my thing is, is, you know, like with the school board tax we just had, that was a sunset date, so they had to go back and revote to determine whether or not they still wanted to continue. The people in the community still wanted to continue to pay that tax. You know, again, that's just my personal opinion. I don't know if, if we need to revisit that. I don't, I have, I got the referendum. I briefly looked it over. I just want to make sure that we give the people what they, what they voted on back in 2008, but we need to do something versus nothing. There's no way, what is it, eight, nine million, 11 million in the...
At the end of this fiscal year that we're in now, we will have about $9 million accumulated for cash.
And so, the $9 million obviously is not going to outfit a brand-new hospital, just no way. So, I do agree with the phases, and that's just my personal opinion. I don't want to take the whole time away from the other commissioners, but I thank y'all for coming out and updating us. Biggest thing, the next thing too, is, is it going to be able to be financially sustainable? That's the other question. You know, we can't, as I told you last week, you know, we all have mortgages. We can't build a $300,000 home and only bring home $26,000 a year. You know, we have to make sure we can pay for it, and that's the other concern I have is I want to make sure that we're sustainable. I know that Alliance is helping out with that. I also would like to see some specialists brought in, a pulmonologist, endocrinologist, a nephrologist, if that's potentially an option, with using FSU medical school students or what have you to better serve our community. Those are just my thoughts and plans and wishes to see the direction for Weems to go.
Yeah. One of the things, you know, right now, we're limited in what we can do right now because of the space. The new emergency department, you know, if we build that, you know, it should, you know, definitely, you know, we should be able to pay for itself. Most emergency departments lose money, just put, just put that out there. Now, Tom hasn't been in the field a long time, but still, you know, what we have, we have an updated facility with more rooms to treat the people that, the patients in our county, the family members that come in our county, the visitors that come in our county, and the constituents such as myself and you, you know, when they go to that emergency room. So, I think this is a good plan, you know, with the imaging suites in there as well. You know, we got, the old plan called for this, the radiology part, you know, with CT radiology and mammography. You know, tweaking this plan, we'll add lab, a part of that plan as well, and respiratory, and then, you know, come make, you know, after this building, say, okay, now, what, what do we need now? You know, what can we afford? I agree with you, you know, economically, you know, I mean, I don't think we can build a, a brand-new facility with 10 inpatient rooms, you know. Now, my heart was there, be honest with you, because I felt that, you know, the people in Franklin County deserve an updated facility. The facilities around us, Gulf, Calhoun, Taylor County, you know, and Madison County, they have new facilities. And so, I've always, you know, believed that. I believe, you know, one person is important, then 10 people, you know, so that's just my heart. But economically, it's not feasible for us to do that. I just think this may be the better route to go here.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, I see the only way it's going to be feasible is if we are fortunate enough with our legislative delegation at the state level to be able to get us a line item in the budget for a new facility. That's the only way I see it being done. I know Senator Lauren Osley, she fought real hard for it last year. She didn't get it, but Calhoun, you know, for Franklin, but I know Calhoun County got it, and they've got a brand-new, want to have a brand-new facility. And it's like, I had a lot of people asking me, why do you, why does the county keep on putting money in the hospital? Well, the thing about it is, it's about the people here. We need facilities, and what's the biggest need here as a facility? Right now, it's an emergency room, you know, like Commissioner Ward said. I know in the past three years, we've had a lot of times that we had to use that emergency room, and I'm glad it was there. And it's like I said, how, what, how can you put somebody's, a money, a money amount on somebody's life? You can't do that. But there is certain things that this board, you know, we can do to help the situation now. I'm a firm believer in emergency rooms and EMS. That's the reason why I brought up the subject of having a modular unit over there in Caravel, out there around Kendrick Park to take care of the Lanark area, or something in the Lanark area because of that. But I wanted to ask the question, you may think it's kind of foolish of me, why in the world did y'all start so quick now? Because it's been, like Commissioner Ward said, it's been since 2007, 2008. Why is it, why are y'all looking at doing the emergency room now?
Well, what happened, you know, back in 2020, well, the hospital board and the county was preparing to do out the facility. You know, I think it probably would have cost around $12 million, $12, $14 million. There was a $10 million USDA grant. You know, with COVID, the county kind of put that on hold. They were deciding, should they go with they, they had two providers, either the line that managed the hospital with Sacred Heart for the hospital. So, with COVID and uncertainties economically, you know, we kind of deobligated at $10 million for the loan. That went back to USDA. And then at that time, we did put in something with the legislature last year, you know, to try to get, you know, some extra funding, you know, maybe to do the hospital. Of course, we didn't get it, so we, looking back at it again, also realizing, you know, just the costs keep going up, and then with the estimates, you know, just some conversation I've had, you know, it's almost like it'll, it'll be double to do this. So, that's, that's what, just to bring you up to speed, what's, what happened.
I was just wondering, it, it's kind of, I was just wondering why all of a sudden were they, were you all looking at a new emergency room when we needed it for the longest time?
Yeah, yeah, what I did was to do, was to do the whole thing, you know, but we didn't get the funding, and then you had to begin to say, okay, now, what, what can we get feasible? What can we do now? And prices keep going up, so we just were to kind of do the whole.
Are you all going to try to do the legislative appropriation again?
We hadn't put anything in now for the, for this legislative session.
Y'all didn't put anything in?
No, we hadn't.
Y'all didn't meet, y'all didn't...
They haven't asked for anything yet.
No, they...
They haven't asked for anything yet.
Yeah, but we are always trying to put it in before they ask for it.
Yeah, 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 we can put another...
Y'all always try to put it in before they ask for it. Kind of like have a wish list, you know, and have it documented and stuff.
Yeah, but we still have that list there. I mean, we can, we can easily, once they ask, put that in, this paperwork, put that in also.
Yeah, because you've got a new senator now, Cory Simon, and he seems like he's a go-getter.
He does.
And, yeah, he seems like he's a go-getter.
He's in touch with areas like, like...
But he needs to go get us the money for some facilities. You know, that's, I mean, that's the way I feel.
And, Mr. Chairman, we were denied the, the allocation that we did take the legislature, that Lauren Osley was pushing. We, we lost that. So, it's not like, and, you know, politics aside, maybe the reason is because maybe with Mr. Simon now, we can, we can change that, but that's something that potentially we can look into for sure.
Well, I know that last year, Representative Schiff actually filed a bill to try to get us $7 million to help us build a new facility because, and, and, and in discussing with him, he thought we were just asking for money period. I said, no, we got money to match it. We got some money, we just don't have all the money. So, he did file the bill, it didn't make it through, but he did. But to, and, Mr. Schuler, if I get off, please help me on this, because I'm trying to remember some of our discussions. Commissioner Ward, just so you, to try to help alleviate some of your questions, the tax that the county passed back in '07, '08 is a small county surtax.
Right.
Okay? We tied it to healthcare with the referendum language, but there's nothing saying that once we get the facilities built or we do everything that was labeled that way, that we can't go back to both cities, make sure they're good with it, and you still use a half cent for healthcare, and the other half cent can be used for infrastructure and the other needs we have. That's why there's not a set date on it. You know what I mean? It's a small county surtax.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm glad you brought that up because I actually meant to bring that up, and it slipped my mind, but you are correct. The small county surtax can be used for so many other things in our county, and I don't want to tie that tax up anymore. As I spoke to you about it, Mr. Walker, there's a, an indigent care, indigent care surtax. I don't think we can claim that.
Yeah, we can.
We can? Okay. So, there's that, and there's also another tax that we can capitalize on to continue to provide to the fund, but just take away the whole cent, because we're only maxed at one, one cent, right? 1%? So, we need to split it up to be able to benefit the other county in terms of infrastructure. That, that was my thing too, like I spoke with you, and thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Chairman, because I forgot to bring that up. But that is, that is one of another reasons why I'm like, we need to do something and get it done if we can.
Yeah, the indigent tax, if I remember the language right for indigent care, it's something we can pass. It's half cent. It would be for indigent care, but it would not be solely payable to Franklin, to Weems or Franklin County entities.
You're completely right about that.
It's payable to wherever that indigent care takes place, whether it be at Bay County or Sacred Heart on the Gulf, you know, or Ascension on the Gulf. Wherever they're seen, that indigent care tax could help with those, with our residents.
That's right.
And so, that's the way that works.
And, Mr. Chairman, in addition to everything the board just said with the indigent care surtax, that actually is an exception. It's one of the two exceptions to the one-cent cap, so you could actually have your one-cent small county surtax and by referendum, if it's approved by the people, an additional half penny for indigent care. It does require some studies and other things that have to be professionally engaged and prepared and presented. There has to be a plan in place, but it, it is an option for the board, and it would be in addition to the current one-cent cap in the small county surtax. in addition to the current one-cent cap and the small county surtax.
I have a question with that. Now, you have the surtax. Is that, is that, is that mirror what was on the ballot? I mean, because, I mean, we're talking about using half, half cent or whatnot. After we get construction, then we're going to start using that for roads. That's not what the people voted for. People voted for healthcare. That was, if I'm not mistaken, because I voted for it. Wouldn't it be wrong if we took that money away from healthcare? I mean, that is one of the issues that I have discussed with Chairman Jones. I have not come down with a final legal opinion, because the board has not, we're not at that point yet. The board hasn't given me any instructions. But there's, there's two components there. One is a referendum, and then the other component is the interlocal agreement that the chairman was referring to. Without the interlocal agreements, what would happen with that small county surtax is it would be divided up among the three local governments based on the amount of their percentage of the collections. So what the interlocal does is it binds the referendum approval for the small county surtax with the interlocals for healthcare, for the infrastructure side, and the subsidy side. So there, there was going to have to be a process of amending the small county surtax, if that's what the board wants to do. Potentially, it could involve going back to a referendum to ask people, but it still is going to require a change to the interlocal agreements, and both the cities and the county would have to agree to that change. Because absent the interlocal agreements, all that money gets distributed out, and I don't remember the exact percentages, I mean, if it gets to that point, but just for purposes of discussion, let's say it's 60% for the county, 20% for each one of the two cities. Without that interlocal agreement, they, they would then, each city would get their 20% under this hypothetical, the county would get its 60%. And as a general revenue surtax, you can spend it basically on anything that's government-related. So there are, there are definitely two components that would have to be considered in the future. But I, I think, as I discussed with the chairman, the intent with the referendum originally was healthcare, build the hospital. First thing to be done was the urgent care facility in Caravelle, then the, basically the reconstruction or renovation of Weems. And once that is done, then EMS support. And then, once those things are accomplished, then the board could look at trying to make some amendments to the surtax.
Does that help, Commissioner Amoson? Just to clarify, too, I wasn't, I wasn't trying to say we're looking to do other things with the money necessarily. What I was trying to clarify for Commissioner Ward is why there's not a sunset date on the small county surtax. That's what I was trying to.
Correct.
That's the biggest thing I was trying to make everyone aware of.
Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, that is a good point, though, Commissioner Amoson. You're right about the verbiage, you know. So thanks for pointing that out.
All right.
Commissioner Sanders was here, as well as Commissioner Lockley. I mean, there, there was, as I recall, some discussion about whether to have a sunset, and I believe the board's decision was not to have a sunset, but this, 2007 was a long time ago, but that's my memory.
You were here.
You were, right?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, well, we, we got any more discussion?
No, but we do have somebody wanting to comment publicly.
Okay.
On the side. Mr. Taylor?
For the record, my name is Donna Butterfield. My request is that you hold a public workshop on Weems. Where is this written plan to rebuild the ED? Where are the projected cost estimates? How much money is Weems spending out of the trust fund or operating to move forward with this project? Been since 2007, since we did have the referendum. What do you know about Weems? Do you know there's only one patient on average a day at Weems Hospital? How many people come to the emergency room? How many people leave the emergency room without waiting to be treated, and why? All I'm saying is, this is boiling to the surface. Right now, you know when the safari is going to be at the library. You know that Parks and Rec picked up 42 tons of debris from the roadside. What do you know about Weems? I think it's time for the public to ask questions, to be involved in what's going to be a major expenditure to this county. We have a right to see this information. All it is, is a sentence, six words, building update and requests. You've got 30 pages of information from your employees. Will you own Weems? Where's their information? I think a public workshop is in order, and I would appreciate it if you would schedule one.
Thank you, Ms. Donna. And if I may, I will address some of that, hopefully. So what I'm understanding that Mr. Walker is asking for you this morning as our CEO of the hospital, our director, is the ability to start the process to get all these documents together that you're, that's what's my understanding. So a, as it's situated, there's us, there's a hospital advisory board, there's Mr. Walker, they can't take actions without this board okaying it. So they haven't started the process to get the documents, Ms. Butterfield, that you're alluding to. So that's why there are no documents yet. They're asking for the authority to try to hash out this kind of plan or design, is what I understand.
And that's correct.
And my misunderstanding.
No, no, that's correct. You're absolutely, absolutely correct.
Let's see, what the, what the people in the county got to realize, I've been through the thing with, from day one. And every time, you ask why we ain't done it? Because every time we tried to do it, it'd get to this point. It always was a block. It always was a block. It should have been done. We told the people we were going to do it, but every time it was time to start, it'd always come to a block. And I was always telling them, okay, price is going up. And instead of going up, back then when we supposed to done it, first time, the whole thing would have been $10 million, $10, $12. Now it's going up. And it's going to go up again. It's going to go up every day you don't build. That whether you build a hospital, emergency room, anything, when you keep on putting it off, it's going to cause more down the road. I ain't, in my whole life, I ain't never seen nothing come down. I always seen it go up. With that, I'm going to make a motion. We accept what the hospital board asked.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the request by Commissioner Lockley. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chair. Just, just so, what we're doing is, we're allowing them to go out and get a quote.
Yes.
That way, we can make it.
The informed decision.
Yeah, an informed decision on whether or not we can afford, and this is sustainable if we build a building.
Yes, sir.
This is not giving any permission to break ground, do anything whatsoever. This is just so we can get more information and make an educated decision on this. With that being said, I'll second the motion.
Yes, sir. That is correct, isn't it, Mr. Walker?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes. If I may.
Go ahead, Mike.
Gentlemen Commissioners, so there's a long process here. I mean, Commissioner Lockley, I hate, I know you hate to hear that, but this, now, if you guys give it the nod that we can proceed today, there is talking to the arch, the original architect of this project, and making sure the board is comfortable with going with that architect, if you want to go off RFQs. There's a lot of gathering, Commissioner Sanders, for funding sources, because basically, the chairman was told by, Commissioner, who did you meet with that said, they may be able to fund it. Triumph, Triumph said they may be able to participate in the equip, not with the construction of the building, but putting the equipment in the building and paying for some other services. There's also the option of legislative appropriation to get it done. That's a possibility. USDA said to us, they would, they have no problem with funding the entire project or part of the project. We have eight or nine million approximately sitting there in account to help with this project also. So again, so the actual, Commissioner Amoson, the actual, you're correct, the actual, the architect, the cost and funding sources all has to be brought to this board for your approval before we, you know, before we ask for a yay in, in moving forward with it. So there's, there's still a road, but at least now, we have Commissioner Lockley, we have a direction and a plan and a path forward with getting at least this phase completed for the people of Franklin County for this tax that they've been paid for, for too many years. And I hope that helps.
We did have a second back, Commissioner Amoson. Any more discussion amongst the board before we vote?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do agree with Ms. Butterfield in having a workshop. Once we get all this data presented, I think it would be nice if we could have the public come and be a part of a workshop to give their input. I know they already technically given their input by voting for this tax and the referendum, but I think that, again, it's been almost 15 years now, let's get some people back in here and get their opinions, and have the workshop, and have Mr. Walker, if he can, present the data that you've collected, that we're going to vote on here in a moment, to just let the public stay informed and aware, hey, this is what's been going on, this is your concern, this is what we're doing, questions, you know, just brainstorm in session, if you will. I don't know if that's something all the rest of the commissioners agree with or not, but that's, that's my, my wish.
We done had 10 of them.
This is true.
This'll be my first.
All right, so any more discussion before we vote on the motion to approve this request? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That is unanimous.
Right. Any more questions?
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Ms. Georgia Ackerman, come on down, it's now your turn. Good to see you today.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for your time today. I'm Georgia Ackerman with Apalachicola Riverkeeper, and I'm going to read my comments from my large-print computer for two reasons, so I can see them, but it also helps keep me on track and be respectful of your time. I'm here today to provide an update on the legal challenge to the Army Corps of Engineers' Water Control Manual, which dictates the timing, volume, and duration of river flow released from Woodriff Dam into the Apalachicola River. This legal challenge was made in 2017 by several conservation groups, including Apalachicola Riverkeeper, after the Corps moved to update the water control manual. The state of Alabama also filed a legal challenge against the Corps' updated water control manual, the management plan, if you will. The two cases were combined in district court in Atlanta. The case overall has been, like many legal cases, somewhat slow-moving. The Conservation Partners' legal complaint pointed out that the Corps' water management plan dramatically increased the upstream withdrawals and severely restricted the downstream releases. Under the new plan, the Corps increased the frequency of drought operation, and that's when drought operations is when more water is held back. This increased by 600%, and it also tripled the amount of time that these restrictive operations are in place. And you all are very well aware that we live downstream of all of those federal reservoirs, with Woodriff Dam being at the top in Chattahoochee for us. Of note, prior to this water control management, water control manual or management plan update, many groups participated in the public comment process, expressing concerns about these potentially detrimental changes, including the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and, of course, Apalachicola Riverkeeper. The changes made to the water flow regime, in short, worsened flow conditions for the Apalachicola River, especially during times of drought, as I just stated. And as we're all aware, the Apalachicola River is the driver of the healthy, productive Apalachicola Bay and a healthy commercial and recreational fishing industry for both Franklin County and our eastern Gulf region. Now, shifting from the legal challenge, separate from this, amicus briefs were submitted to the court by numerous people in our region who wanted to express concerns to the updated manual. As you likely know, briefs are not part of the explicit legal challenge, rather the reports to a judge or a court sharing perspectives. And in this case, it would be in how river and bay impact, how the river and bay impacts them, and how the issues of the case affect them. Amicus briefs, in summary, give voice to those outside the legal challenge and an opportunity to have their concerns heard by the court. Early in 2021, multiple people and groups submitted amicus briefs related to the case, including Franklin County, which, who, which voted unanimously to be included on the combined brief. On this brief also included were the City of Apalachicola, Calhoun County, Liberty County, Jackson County, the Florida Coastal Conservation Association, Tripp Ockman, Al Bryant, Shannon Hartsfield, Lynn Martina, Kevin Martina, Carmen McLemore, Daniel Taunton, Richard Bickel, and Tommy, Thomas, Tommy Ward. The brief was compiled pro bono by a law clinic at the Vermont Law School, so there was no cost for any of the parties. Separately, amicus briefs were also submitted to the district court by the Apalachia Audubon Society, former Senator Bob Graham, the St. George Civic Island Club, and the St. George Plantation Homeowners Association, who submitted a brief together. While the case has been slow-moving overall, a few months ago, regrettably, the district court ruled in favor of the court, and the case is now headed to appeals court. Both cases, Alabama's as well, and the conservation case are again combined, so they're headed to appeals court as one case. And like the district court, amicus briefs can again be submitted to the appeals court. This gives the appeal court the same access to the information that the district court had, and the same brief that was submitted on behalf of the county, Franklin County, the City of Apalachicola, and the other parties I named can also head on to this court. The briefs are due soon. The, the law clinic director told me it was prudent that all of these part, all parties that were part of the brief be again informed, and Mr. Shula may suggest that it's an action item, I'm not really sure, because I'm not an attorney, but I certainly wouldn't give a thumbs up to send something on without everybody being aware that the process is in play. I'll pause there, because that was a lot. I'm happy to answer more questions related to the brief, or if there's more specifics on the legal challenge and the timeline and, and that process. I'm also gladly answer questions or concerns in that area.
Any questions, Commissioners? So this is something we've already filed before, it's going to an appeals court?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's, I'm going to clarify that. So it's, it's already in action, the board has taken before?
Correct, and it's part of public record. It's a separate process than the, the legal challenge. And again, the, the law clinic said it would be prudent to update everybody on, on what's happening, and that this brief can be submitted to the appellate court.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, my recommendation would be for the board to authorize the refiling of this same amicus brief that was approved before. There'll have to be a motion filed with, with the appellate court, seeking their authority to file the amicus brief, but there is very, very, I would say, minimal risk. I hate to say that anything's completely risk-free, because you just don't know, but I, I think that the upside to this, the benefit potentially far outweighs whatever small risks may actually exist. So that's my recommendation to the board, to authorize them to file the motion to submit the amicus brief to the Circuit Court of Appeal in Atlanta.
Anyone else have anything to say, or how would entertain a motion?
Motion to per.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? I will say that I hope it goes well. I don't know how it's going to go, because we haven't had many good rulings in our favor when it comes to the water and how the water's done. But at the end of the day, and it's just my opinion, if, if we were to get water without the Corps maintaining the river channel, it's eventually going to fill in, and you're not going to have water anyway. So, I mean, that's just my own personal opinion. Now, it might not happen in a year's time or five years' time, but that's what they did. There was barge traffic. Now, you'll be hard-pressed to come around some of those sloughs. That's why there's been some actual dredging of the sloughs. But if the river channel itself were dredged, you wouldn't have that problem, but we'll see how this goes. I do support the action of the board today. Anyone else before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you. I appreciate your leadership in our county, and I'll add, I hope to be back in front of. of you soon so that I can update you on Apalachicola Riverkeeper's slough restoration project. As you know, we're working in Douglas Slough, Spiders Cut, and more closely in East River, and we, and good things are happening, and I'm real eager. We'll wait till the beginning of the year and we'll come back and we'll talk more about that. And if I can be helpful in any time, um, and get anybody out on the water, please call on me. I'm, I'm around the corner, and I'm always happy to provide information and perspective on, on the work that we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ackerman.
I want to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
On that up 65, I see they got, that sign says something about the river. Y'all doing that?
WEA.
The WEA?
We are...
WEA.
Oh, okay.
Y'all are part of that?
That is not, that is not us. We are working on some vegetative debris removal presently up in Spiders Cut. Um, next year, we should be out in East River, and I'll bring that timeline to you when I come back and hopefully present perhaps in, in late January.
Thank you, Ms. Ackerman.
Thank you, thank you all.
All right, so, Ms. Griffith, we ready to open some bids?
Oh, yes, we are.
Hell, I thought we'd never see that day.
Commissioner, what about Mr. Bell?
Oh, I'm sorry. I had my page turned over. My bad. Hold on.
Mr. Jamie Bell, please come forward.
And while he's moving forward, to let the Board know that you see that, uh, the Pat O'Connell with the LTPT thing, we're going to do that at the next meeting. We, uh, postponed that for a number of reasons. So, next meeting.
Excuse me, Mr. Bell, please proceed, sir.
I'm just getting him sharing my screen.
All right, good. We know how technology works or doesn't work.
It's not blocking you, is it? You shouldn't be able to choose. Turn off, turn back on.
Yeah. Sometimes you have to turn off, turn back on.
Yep, share screen is still on.
It's making me go into settings.
Do you have to click on his screen in particular, Michael? Bring it up?
No, no, sir. Okay. 1012.
Okay.
Two. Pick. You want to share sound, use that video clip. Which one is your main screen? Do you know?
No, I don't. I've never had this pop-up before when I've stared.
Click, double-click desktop and see. Yeah. Share that. See what's this. Well, I'm not getting up to help with text. We all look better.
The screen recording is highlighted there.
Okay. Click on this. Put in your password. Click zoom. Yeah, yeah.
If I do later, will it let me do it now?
I guess.
I'm kind of ready.
Have you... Share screen is on.
No.
That's probably why. But there you go. You're good now. You can actually pick the PowerPoint if that's what you want to do. Okay, you're good.
Thank you for that. Sorry for that. Do I need to wait for the chairman, or are we good?
Good.
Hi, I'm Jamie Bell from Second Harvest Food Bank of the Big Bend. I was here, uh, a few months ago with a colleague of mine just sharing what, uh, what we've done in Franklin County. And Franklin County is one of 10 counties that we serve. In fact, we now, uh, serve 15 counties, having picked up some on the, uh, eastern side of the Big Bend. Um, our mission is to advance change by che, by feeding the hungry and educating and engaging the community to fight and end hunger, and we want, our vision is to see a hunger-free, uh, Florida, uh, Big Bend. When we take a look at what's going on in Franklin County, we, uh, one of the things we want to do is to, uh, be a resource to you in looking at, um, poverty within Franklin County. And when we take a look at this, when we take a look at Franklin County, from our, uh, metrics that we see is 16% of Franklin County is food insecure, meaning that they don't know where their next meal is going to come from. But when you look at a little bit more, we see that 18% of households are in poverty, and 35% of families live paycheck to paycheck. And so you're talking 53% of your population, the citizens of Franklin County, at best, live paycheck to paycheck. And, uh, right now, with the rising costs of everything, we just talked about it, right? That, uh, is, people are having to make decisions every single day, is what bills are going to pay, what they're not going to pay, and they're making that decision many times at the grocery store. And so what, uh, what we are proposing, uh, first of all, before I get there, is, this is the, the five-year outlook at the pounds that the food bank has brought into Franklin County. And you can see, uh, the numbers spike in 2020, and that is, uh, COVID happened, and so we came in and, uh, brought in a lot more food. The numbers started to go back down in 2021, but as 2022 has come around, as mentioned, the food, the, it, food insecurity has increased again. And so what we are proposing is a six-way partnership with five counties and Second Harvest Food Bank for a mobile pop pantry. A mobile pop pantry allows Second Harvest to come in and go to a food desert and to, um, increase access to food. We want as many people to receive food as possible. It also minimizes transportation barriers. Uh, by going to a location routinely, tho, that community understands that Second Harvest is there for them and that they can routinely get food from that location in the mobile pop pantry. One of the things we've also learned by, uh, localizing where we go and being very intentional about where we go is that it minimizes food waste. So, right now, when somebody needs food, they come to, uh, one of our partner agencies, one of the churches here in Franklin County, to the food pantry, and they get food. Well, many times they'll get more than they can eat because they know that this is the only time that they're going to be able to get food. And so by having a routine place and being there regularly, then that behavior of getting more than what you need starts to decrease, and that minimizes, uh, food waste. And so this trailer, uh, the mobile pop pantry is, uh, built out, uh, to food-grade standards. Um, our food bank and all of our equipment is inspected by the USDA routinely, and we have to hold very high standards on what we do. It would also allow us to carry different type of products, from fresh produce to some boxed goods, um, and in some sense provides a little bit more of a shopping experience for the resident that's coming in, that they can go in and get exactly, uh, what they need. So, beyond just providing food, the mobile pop pantry, uh, has some other uses as well. One, it would allow us to do cooking demonstrations where we have a nutritionist on-site that is preparing food that is in the pantry, so that anybody coming up to get food can see the nutritionist cook it, see, get the ingredients, and go home and cook it for dinner that night. And in doing that, we're starting to teach any of the residents coming to the pop pantry how to prepare food, what they can do, and again, it just creates a habit and a sense of stability that they know that they have food that is coming. A mobile pop pantry also helps us, um, be, uh, more responsive in disaster. You know, those first 72 hours after a storm are rough because many of us are doing MREs and, uh, they aren't the greatest to have to be on for an extended period of time. And so the pop pantry lets us get in and get fresh food from our warehouse in Tallahassee. Second Harvest of the Big Bend is one of three designated, uh, emergency disaster warehouses in the state of Florida. And so we have on stock right now that we keep in rotation, uh, thousands of bottles of water. We do have MREs, but we, and we also have other food that's available that we rotate to make sure that we have available in a time of disaster. A mobile pop pantry just allows us a little bit more, uh, flexibility and ease of use to get in and, uh, to help, uh, your community. And also, lastly, it also helps us do food education along with those cooking demonstrations. And so it, uh, we are teaching the residents as well about food. And so here's just another couple pictures. And so we, we believe that the mobile pop pantry per visit will impact 220 people. 220 people can be served, that's about 100 families, and it's about 2,500 meals or 3,000 pounds distributed on each visit. The mobile pot, pop pantry would come, uh, once a week to Franklin County. It might be in a different location each week, and so it might rotate like one, uh, one week it might be in Carabelle, the next week it might be in East Point, right? It might do that, but it's going to be routine and regular, and the, this is the amount of, uh, these are the numbers that we expect to be able to, to help each visit. Now, it's no small cost. This is the, this is the total cost, uh, for the, uh, the mobile pop pantry, not what I'm asking of Franklin County. And so these numbers we've gone through, we've reached out to vendors on, on these things, and we know what to expect on the food and some personnel and maintenance and the contingency. And the entire project would be for $600,000. And what we are proposing is that, uh, through a six-way partnership between five counties and Second Harvest, that we all, uh, are equal partners in the cost of the, of mobile pop pantry. And so we would be asking for $25,000 a year over four years, and, uh, that would allow us, uh, the opportunity to come in and, uh, serve your community. And so we would be able to get started, uh, with the approval of each county commission, right? And so we don't have to wait till year four to get started, but we would be able to get started sooner, uh, rather than later. And so, uh, this morning, I am presenting this to you as, um, an opportunity to help those in need in your community and, uh, help us to help them. And so with that, are there any questions?
Yeah. I got a question. It says six counties.
Five counties.
Five counties.
And Second Harvest is the sixth partner.
I believe it. I wholly believe in helping feed people.
Mm-hmm.
But at the same time, you asking for $25,000 from each county. My county don't got the 12,000 people. Some of the other county's got double that. So can you justify that?
Yeah, so what, we're not, we're not doing it based on the population. We're doing it based on how many, how many times we're coming to the, uh, to the community, right? And we're going to be, so we'd be coming to Franklin County four times a month, and what we know we can do is still serve that many, uh, individuals and that many pounds. And so we're not basing it off of the, uh, the population of the county, but what we believe we can do in that county. Does that make sense? No?
So, can I, can I ask a question, Mr. Jamie?
Yeah.
I'm going to try to help clarify. So even, probably the largest county here is Jackson?
Mm-hmm.
But under this proposal, you're not going to go, Second Harvest isn't going to take this pop-up pantry to Jackson County more than it does Liberty County?
Correct.
Because they have more people?
Correct.
You're still going to go once a week to Jackson County, just like you go once a week to Liberty? That's what, that's what I'm understanding.
Yeah, that is, that's correct. That, that's what we would be doing, that it would be, that's why it would be equal across, um, all five counties.
Right. Did that help Commissioner Lockley?
Basically, the truck's full. When it gets empty, they pull out, and they bring a full truck here. I mean, that's, I think that's kind of the...
Yeah.
The point, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just curious, how many, how many other counties have you pitched this to?
So, um, I've met with several counties already. Of these five, I've met with, uh, Jacks, uh, I've met with Jackson, Gulf, and, um, and then Franklin tomorrow. This is the first board presentation I've given. I've met with county administrators, managers, or clerks, and, um, a county commissioner or chairperson. And tomorrow I'll meet with, uh, Liberty County, um, the clerk and, uh, the chairwoman there. And so in those meetings, they've been favorable. Uh, we understand that there's a process that the county has, and that we have to go through that process, and, uh, any of the, the, the overall budgeted items that we have there will have to be refined, and we'll report back to, um, the counties on that as well. But so far, the, um, the, the meetings have been favorable, but still are subject to go to the, uh, county commission.
We're the first board of county commission you're pitching it to?
Yes. And so, and again, anything that we would do, obviously, would be contingent on other counties, right? And so, and so it just takes a lot of communication on our side with, uh, with Franklin County and, um, letting them know where, where we are on it. I'll be presenting, I was originally supposed to present, uh, this month in, um, Gulf County, but I was asked to present that in, in January. And so, and I, and I, and I would think that the other three will be presenting in January as well.
Well, you guys are second harvest here now, right?
So we have, we have a couple partner agencies, um, through some churches that we, um, dis- distribute food in. This was, what we are proposing is to be in addition to that, so that...
You're not going to eliminate them?
No, not by any means. Uh, this is, we did, we know there's still a major food gap, and as, like, I mean, as we had a, listened to a long conversation, um, today, like, one of the major industries up, in Franklin County is shut down here for, for a long while, and so there's going to be food insecurity for quite some time.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a quick question. I know that, and Aaron, I don't know if you can clarify this, uh, I was going back to our budget from this previous year, and I know we give money to agencies. Are we giving any money to Second Harvest at this time? Uh, to my knowledge, I don't think we...
We are not.
Okay.
So it's, it's... We do Franklin's Promise, we also do the Carabelle Food Pantry, um, we also got, uh, a new one that we just started looking to get Franklin Foods. Um, so the county does contribute to, um, multiple food pantries at this time.
And is it, uh, I'm, I'm trying to pull this up. I see that the food pantry is, only asked for like $5,000 this last fiscal year.
Yes, the, uh, the Carabelle one, and then Franklin's Promise, I believe, is a larger value.
Let's see what, I've got the budget pulled up. I'm trying to, I'm just trying to verify these numbers, just so I can ju, we can justify a cost.
Sure.
You know, to, to...
Well, don't the, don't the Franklin Promise get the second harvest?
They get it from somebody else.
No, Franklin is not a partner agency.
Franklin's Promise gets 10,000. Well, rounded up, 10, about 10,000.
So off the top of my head, I don't know particularly... So off the top of my head, I don't know particularly with that one, is that many times our partner agencies are, tend to be local churches, and those churches, it is a member of that congregation that it, you know, God has laid it on their heart to help individuals, and so it's run by a congregant or a member of that church. And, and the frequency that they're available isn't as much, right? So it might be the first and third Tuesday of the month. I don't know off the top of my head right now what it specifically is here. And so, again, this just provides a more routine availability. And it also is sometimes with, it would be open to the county. So if we're in East Point, you don't have to live in East Point that day to come get food, right? If you're, if you're driving through and you see, you come by and, and pick it up.
Supposedly give up.
Pardon me?
You got a truck load, right?
Mm-hmm.
You gonna stage it. What if the truck give up, y'all gonna bring it some over to the next week or that week?
Yeah, so if there's, if there's a problem with, with the, with the truck, is that what you're asking? If the truck were to break down, you're just not gonna?
No, I'm asking you. They give out a food.
You sell out, or not sell out, but if you give it all away, or you're gonna reload and come back?
Yeah, but fold it like in one day.
Yeah, so I would absolutely be surprised if in any given day that, we tend to have enough food that we wouldn't run out of food unless it was towards like the end of the day where we've served quite a bit of clientele that has come in. And what would happen, I think, is our, our programs team would recognize, okay, we, you know, we went through a lot of food this first week, and so there might be a little bit of a learning curve, right? That the next week, we, we come with even more food, or that supply chain is, is enhanced so that we know exactly how much to be bringing.
I get the question to be, how long a truck will last?
How long a truck could wa, I'm sorry, I can't hear well.
How long will a truck of food last? A week? A month?
So the, the amount of food that we bring will be, are you asking for like, if someone comes and gets food from us on the truck, how long that'll last? Or how much?
Like the people go and come.
Yeah.
I'm asking, I guess I'm asking, if you got the whole count of people going there in one day, will that truck last a week or a day?
So if the whole county, if, if everybody would come, there's gonna be enough food to distribute for that day, and then what each client receives from us will be several days' worth of food.
Well, I ain't got no problem to feed these, but I won't, but I don't.
Right now, right now, you serve Carabel and East Point, am I right?
Well, we serve the, we serve the whole community, it's just where the partner agencies are, yeah.
The, the truck comes down, I know, and brings it to East Point, the truck comes down, and we've got some people that goes up there, the Archangels go up there and pick it up and bring it back down. There is gonna come a time in this county before this inflation and all that's over, just like I made a point with the FWC, where, where those other smaller groups are gonna be bled out with the food, and you're gonna have to have somebody come in here and handle it. I think what Mr. Lockley was saying was, how much food will, in one of those trucks, how many people will it feed in the truck that you bring down? Will it feed 1,000 people?
Yeah.
Will it feed 500 people? Is that about, about what you want to know, Mr. Lockley?
So we believe that the, the truck can serve, when it comes each week, it will serve 220 people, right? And so that's about 100 families would be able to come through and pick up food that will last them several days at home.
Okay, 20 people served, that'd be 100 families, basically. And you're saying you're gonna, now, if, if the county was to partner with this, because it, basically that's what it is, it's a partnership.
Yes.
Would they be serving Carabel, East Point, Appalachia, and Fox Unknown, or what?
So that's one of the things that we'll work with the county on, and like, some of you, the elected officials, that know where some of these food deserts are, right? That we can go and specifically go and be in the county, right? As opposed to going into a, being, being in a, a city or a municipality.
Well, because one of the main problems with dispersing the food is, a lot of people don't have the transportation to get there to get the food.
And that's what, that's, and that's, that's what we're hoping.
Yeah.
That's one of the major things that we're hoping to accomplish, is, is to eliminate transportation barriers.
Yeah.
Right.
Because it is, it, you know, it's far ways between, you know, the IGA and the Piggly Wiggly, right?
That's all the two stories we got.
Yeah, yeah, and.
Well, you got big talk.
And having lived in small towns where you just shop at the IGA, right? Like, that's all you have, and it might be a 15, 20-minute drive in. And so what we, what we're looking to do is to, to eliminate that as much as possible to really help people.
Mr. Chairman, question? So, to follow up on Commissioner Lockley's question, so, okay, so you estimate 220, but will you stock the truck for maybe 300?
Yeah.
People?
Yes.
I think that's what he's kind of figured out.
Yeah.
You know, how much food is actually there, you know?
Yeah, there, there, when we stock it, it will be stocked for more than just the 220.
For what you've estimated.
Yeah, but this is what, this is what we estimate.
Okay.
Will happen.
Good, Commissioner, that helps?
And it's not to say like our first time out, we, you know, we might miss the mark, right?
Yeah, it's a learning curve.
We'll, we'll learn, and we'll, we'll, we'll make corrections.
Mr. Chairman, I got a couple, couple quick questions. I do like the fact that it is mobile to serve the people in the community that's underserved in terms of transportation. The, I know a lot of the food pantries, they give out food that's already like preboxed. Is this something like a, that can go in and pick what they want to take home with them, to cook and prepare?
Yes.
Okay.
And so when I say it's a little bit more of a shopping experience, they're going in and they're gonna say, you know what? I don't want grapefruit, I want apples.
So it eliminates the food waste.
Right, it eliminates the food waste, and it's actually better, because when, when you're getting the prepared food, like, you're just, the nutrition that maybe you can get from that grapefruit, that client isn't gonna receive it, any, any nutrition. But if they know that they're gonna eat apples, well then, by all means, take the apples. Somebody else who doesn't like apples is gonna like grapefruit. And so it's, and so it's a little bit more of a shopping experience, and it really helps people, I think, just beyond giving them what they like. I think it really promotes a better nutrition in the end.
Well, they walk in and do their own thing.
They'll be shopping their stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
Let me, let me ask you a question, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. If any of these counties, Calhoun, Jackson, Liberty, you know, Gulf, Franklin, if any of those counties choose not to participate, are y'all still gonna serve their underserved?
Yes, we just, what we'd have to do is reconvene in how that, what that might look like. What, does it look like, maybe a different partnership with Franklin County? Or are we able to do something entirely different? But yeah, that's something that we are, you know, there's definitely the possibility that one of these counties say no, and we'll work with that. And there's a couple contingency plans that we do have in place to, to, to address that.
Yeah, because I don't want the burden to be on just a couple of counties and.
Yeah.
And everything. Maybe call.
With that said, Mr. Chairman, it, it sounds to me where we're heading is to kind of give Jamie a vote of confidence, but ask him to, okay, talk to the other counties and then circle back to us and let us know what's going on, so we can then decide on, on a final vote.
Yeah.
I think that's what he's looking for also, so, you know.
Mr. Chairman, I, I agree, I, this all sounds great. I mean, I'm all for, like, they, Commissioner Lockley and Commissioner said feeding the people, but then again, it's how we gonna pay for it? You know, that's the next question, so I, I agree with that.
It's a learning curve for me, that's why I'm asking all the questions.
It's all good.
Yeah, and that's one of the things, we want, we want to be available to you who represent the county to kind of dig into this and to help you understand the needs in the community a little bit better.
Well, I will say that I do support this idea. We've had several conversations about it, and just to make the board aware, so there was a conversation when you guys first came, let's not remember it wrong, we were talking about a, a food locker system. But then there's the whole, you know, this trailer has a little bit of cost, but that food locker system was gonna have cost. We're gonna have to find a partner willing to stuff the locker, you know, all these kind of things.
Yeah.
And then the locker would just, it would be in one place. It would not be mobile, it would not, you know what I mean? And that was a great idea, and all the board liked it, but the downside was, it wasn't mobile, it wasn't able to address going to where we know that the highest amount of poverty rate in our county is at, and where people are the most insecure with food, the truly the food deserts, if you will, to try to help meet the need. They're able, there's a system where they're able to shop and get the stuff they want. They're not just given a box full of goods and saying, here you go, you know? And I'm not downing that, but here you go, be fed, you know, you got this box, and that's what we're giving everybody. So all that helps, in my opinion, because, listen, it's one thing to need help, it's another thing to feel like you can only get what you're getting, because this is all we're gonna give you. So I, I do like the flexibility of this program. Well, like I said, we've discussed it several times. I'm glad to see it presented to the board today. I'm in support of it. I do know we have to come up with how we're gonna pay for it, but I am in favor of this program.
Well, who washed the truck?
Who washes the truck?
Well, that's them.
It's, that's all on us.
Yeah.
So the maintenance, all of that.
No, who keeps an eye on? It comes in once.
Yeah, it's, it's staffed, and that's the other thing that we're, we're seeing in other counties, is that there, there are these food deserts, but there's not a, to be a partner agency with Second Harvest Sweet Bank, you have to be a nonprofit and have your 501(c)(3). What this does is that if there's, if there's one or two people in a community that can volunteer, it'll be staffed by Second Harvest employees, and then those volunteers can still do something, and they'll become Second Harvest volunteers, right? And so it can be a homeowner's association that wants to volunteer, right? Or something along those lines. And so it even creates more flexibility with who can help, but it will be staffed and manned by Second Harvest associates.
Right, that's part of the cost.
Yeah.
My only other question is, is how, how frequent would, would the scheduling be? Would it come in every other week?
It, it would come every week, it'd be.
Every week.
That's what, in, in our conversations, we've talked about coming here weekly, because it's, one of the, one of the major things about this program is that it creates routine, which then creates stability for those who are, you know, food unstable. And so that's, we need to create that, the stability, because that's how you start to break that cycle of poverty, right? Because like, the cycle of poverty just says, you know what, I gotta get when, when I can, right? And that's why we get food waste. By creating the routine and building trust with a community, then they start to realize, nope, Second Harvest is here for me, I got five days' worth of food, I know I can take care of a couple more, but I know they're gonna be here again, right?
You better make sure you get that point across, that we'll be here tomorrow.
Yeah.
Because if not, you might be emptied that day.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, I'd support it, contingent on other counties' involvement, but.
Mr. Chairman, do we need a motion to have, I mean, I don't think we need a motion, this is information only to.
You're not looking for a motion today necessarily, you just wanna know that we're in agreements to occur.
I, I wanna know that you're in agreement to it, because there's gonna be, I understand that there's an entire process. First, you have to find funding, and then whatever contractual agreements we have to go through. And so it's primarily just saying, you know, Jamie, in Second Harvest, we like this idea, keep moving forward with it, and we'll just keep on moving forward until we can't move forward anymore.
Okay. So is any commissioners disagree? I guess the best way to do it?
I just know in a couple years, you need to stock up on saltines and hot sauce.
Yeah, right. We got some oysters.
Yeah.
We ain't know.
We'll start stocking up now.
I don't know.
At least by then, right?
Well, and that's one of the things too about this program, is that any, any farms that we have partnerships with locally, that food will be basically coming back and making sure that it's staying in the county and helping the community as well.
They may even handle oysters.
So, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
No, sorry. All right. So now, Ms. Griffith, can we open some RFQs and bids?
First one is the RFQ.
Okay, all right, the first one we're gonna open is an RFQ, and it's the, we were seeking civil engineering services relating to the construction, engineering, and inspection for widening and resurfacing improvements on County Road 67 from the Crooked River Bridge to State Forest Road 166. The total length of the project is approximately two miles. The scope of the project includes widening and resurfacing the existing lanes, the addition of five-foot paved shoulders, shoulder stabilization, and culvert extensions. In addition, signage and pavement markings will be upgraded or replaced. Consideration will be given to only those firms that are qualified pursuant to law that have been pre-qualified, the Florida Department of Transportation, to perform the indicated types of work. Once these responses are open, they will be released to a ranking committee made up of Michael Morone, Courtney Bankston, and myself, and Mark Currington will do the tabulation. Okay, our first one is from EXP US Services Incorporated from Tallahassee, Florida.
And there's, explain, there are no bid amounts?
Oh, yeah, there's no bid amounts, because this is actually qualifications-based. Okay. And the next is going to be Southeastern Consulting Engineers, and they are located in Port St. Joe, Florida.
Get your knife, mom.
Yeah, they don't let me secure it. They don't trust me. Here, use mine, let me check.
Yeah. This one's top secret. Okay, this is from AECom Technical Services from Tallahassee, Florida. And last is HMV Professional Engineers from Marianna, Florida.
So those are four?
Mm-hmm.
So a motion to send it to the ranking committee? Well, to, the committee that's laying the, send it to the committee board, okay? Please, the marks.
So just to clarify, I'll make sure I didn't quite hear you.
Yeah.
The motion's gonna be to appoint the committee that has been named?
Yes, sir.
And then send this to that committee?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
One motion or two, Mr. Chairman?
One's fine.
I'll make a motion.
All right, I have a motion to approve that action by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion, Commissioner? All in favor?
Uh-uh.
All opposed? That is a four-o vote. Commissioner Lockley is left in on temporary. But it is.
There should be three.
Next is, what's next?
I thought we had three of these.
No, there are two.
Only two? Okay, okay. Okay.
Second Street is next.
Okay, um, okay, the second one was, let's see, we were receiving sealed bids from any qualified person, company, or corporation interested in constructing the Second Street and US 98 intersection repairs in East Point. This project was actually designed by Dewberry Engineers, and it is being funded by Commissioner Jones Road Paving Funds.
And these are people invitation for bids, so they, you will have a quote to, a number to write down.
Okay, and the first respondent is Piget Asphalt and Site Work. Let's see, the total base bid is 184,910 dollars. That was a lot more than I thought. And the bid bond is included. Okay, and the second bid is from. Okay, and the second bid is from Coastline Clearing and Development LLC of East Point, And this base bid is $57,330. Yeah, let's make sure that we have a bid bond here. Yes, and the bid bond is included. And with this, we will actually release these bids back to Dewberry Engineers for their review to make sure that the bids are complete and they do have everything that was needed. And then, at your next meeting, we should be able to make an award.
That's the motion.
And so, one motion can cover that as well?
Yes, sir.
Motion to, motion, I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Ward takes the motion. Commissioner Amerson seconded the motion of sending this to Dewberry, so they can review these bids that have been received and make a recommendation to us at our next meeting. Any further discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That is a unanimous vote for it.
Okay, Commissioners, and the next one is the Third Street West Dune Walkover. This project is being funded by the Tourist Development Council. The project consists of the construction of a wooden dune walkover project located at the end of Third Street West, St. George Island, specifically between DEP monuments R-82 and R-83. The pile-supported structure is a six-foot wide by 187.8-foot long for an area of approximately 1,127 square feet of dune walkover. MRD and Associates did design and permit this project, and this, as only one bid is received, it will be released to MRD and Associates for their review and recommendation as well. The bid is from Live Flyer Incorporated from Carabel, Florida. And the base bid is $187,634. That's a lot more than what we thought as well. So, that one, that one, we, we may have to, we will have to talk to MRD on that.
Does it have a bid bond?
Yes, there is a bid bond included.
So, Mr. Chairman, the, the motion would be to direct this to MRD and Associates for review and return of the recommendation back to them.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to give this to MRD and Associates.
Okay, so a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward?
Second.
Second by two, sounds like, Commissioner Sanders and Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Again, that's unanimous vote. All right, any more to open?
That's it.
Can I ask Erin something?
Yes.
Erin, give us an update, what you were talking to me yesterday about the update on 67. Remember, I brought up, I didn't want it pieced-mealed, and you said that the...
Oh, oh, yes, it's included in my report.
Oh, you, okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure, I thought it was three weeks.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll wait.
Well, let's, let's just move on to your report, Ms. Griffith. You're next, anyway.
Okay, item number one, Southeastern Consulting Engineers recommend the acceptance of the attached change order for the C-30A widening and resurfacing project. The attached negative $71 and 42 change order is the final reconciliation of quantities for the project as the work is now complete. The total contract cost for Robertson Roberts to widen and resurface the 3.466 miles of roadway was $3,449,242.23. Board action to accept and authorize the chairman to sign the attached final change order number three for the CR-30A project.
Pleasure to the board. Motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Unanimous.
Right, Commissioners, next item is item number two. At the November 15th meeting, the board authorized county staff to negotiate with county engineers Dewberry for the, for the design and widening, and resurfacing of Patent Drive in East Point. Dewberry Engineers has submitted a task order in the amount of $54,602, which will be fully funded by the Florida Department of Transportation SigP Design Grant to widen and resurface the .73 miles from SR-30, which is US-98, to SR-300 Island Drive. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached task order with Dewberry Engineers for the Patent Drive project.
So, move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, next item is item number three. Franklin County has received a $44,247 grant agreement from the Florida Department of Transportation Small County Outreach Program to survey, design, permit, and prepare construction plans and specifications to widen and resurface the .372 miles of Hickory Dip Road to North Bay Shore Drive. This project will widen the roadway from 18-foot to 24-foot, add pavement markings and upgrade signage. Drainage improvements will include the extension replacement corrections of dual 36-inch crossdrains at Indian Creek. Roadway drainage will also be evaluated to determine if additional ditches, side drains, and crossdrains are required. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached grant agreement and resolution of authorization.
So, move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, next item is item number four. Franklin County has received a $261,690 grant agreement from the Florida Department of Transportation Small County Road Assistance Program to survey, design, permit, and prepare construction plans and specifications to widen and resurface the final 2.6 miles of CR-67 from State Forest Road 172 all the way to the Liberty County line. This project will widen the roadway from 20-foot to 24-foot with two 12-foot travel lanes with five-foot paved shoulders, eight-foot total shoulder width, pavement markings, and upgraded signage. Drainage improvements will include extension, replacement, and correction of all crossdrains. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached grant agreement and resolution of authorization.
Pleasure to the board, all right. Motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward? Any discussion, Commissioners?
I'm just glad to see this take place, and I have to ask the question, Michael, you here, where does this, does this take into the fact that we've got to replace that Womack Creek, the Womack Creek, it's not a bridge, it's just where it goes over Womack Creek, and you have to do that?
Oh, that's, that's a separate project. Yeah, we do have that one in the works right now. Yeah, yeah.
So, you need to make sure that they coincide with each other. Because it, that Womack Creek, fix and match is gonna be time-consuming.
Yeah, that's a big one.
Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's all, so unanimous.
Okay, next item number five. The Florida Historic Preservation Grant Administrator for the renovation of the Carabel Beach Wayside Park Pavilions and Restrooms Project has given approval for the county to proceed with advertising for the construction bids for the project. The grant agreement is in review and will be ready for acceptance by the board at your next meeting on December 20th. In the draft advertisement, a mandatory pre-bid conference will be held onsite on Wednesday, January 4th, 2023, and bids will be due by 4:00 PM on Friday, January 13th, 2023, to be opened at the meeting on January 17th, 2023. Contractors will have approximately 120 days to complete the project once a notice to proceed is issued. Board action to advertise for bids for the renovation to the Carabel Beach Wayside Park Pavilions and Restrooms.
So, move. Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amerson and Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. I believe I called all that.
And Commissioners, I do have one...
All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous. Sorry, I did that to you.
It's okay.
My bad. Too long of a pause.
I saw an opening.
I'm sorry.
The next item is actually not on, not scheduled on my report, but it is a board action item that I do need to bring up, because, you know, Ms. Pat's not able to do the presentation for the broadband today. But we would also need to get board action to advertise, to actually incur advertising expenses for advertising the broadband meetings, and also doing a lot of the public outreach. So, just...
Okay, yeah, I definitely, they'd be paid out professional services?
It would be paid out of the, the board's advertising budget.
Advertising, okay, that works. I just wanted to clarify, are we asking for a set amount, or just for whatever they need to do?
For whatever they need to do, but I, yeah, it's, it's, it's not gonna be much. It'll, it'll be several thousand dollars at, at most.
Okay. All right, so do we need to call for public comment first? So, if there's anyone in the room that'd like to comment on this before we take action, they will make the time available, seeing we're not being rushed by a group of people. Please check and see if there's anybody online that would wish to comment.
Speaking of a group of people, would any of the, anyone online would like to comment on this?
Since it was not on our agenda.
Because it's not on our agenda. No hands raised. Mr. Chairman?
All right, so pleasure to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I got a quick question first. This is solely for the Ms. Pat and the, the local technology planning?
Yeah, the broadband.
Is, is the money that's allocated from the governor for this budgeted? Can some of that be used for...
We haven't gotten any of that money yet, is the problem.
Yeah, okay, so we need some money now.
Right, we're, yes.
So, we can reimburse ourselves with the, with that money?
We will not be able to reimburse ourselves for the advertising, I don't believe.
If it allows.
Yeah.
We haven't seen the particulars of some of the grants yet, so we couldn't, I, I...
Yeah, they usually don't allow you to go back before you have a grant agreement in place, so, you know, okay.
But we do have an advertising budget.
Mm-hmm, we do.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion, Commissioner? All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Okay, next item is item number six, and it's IT Management Software for the Supervisor of Elections Office. During the budget discussions, the Supervisor of Elections mentioned that her software that she had purchased in 2020, which was a mandate for software security requirements and elections management software, it, she actually had a five-year agreement, and that was actually expiring. She was hoping to get a grant to actually renew the cost of the maintenance agreement on that, but it did not come through. As the grant funding was not approved for this fiscal year, it is a necessary expense for the elections operations. The Supervisor's office will need to add the expense in their next year's operating budget, and this first year will need to be paid by the capital outlay maintenance funds on the board's side. So, board action to approve payment of the annual invoices for this first year of unfunded IT management software for the Supervisor of Elections.
Ms. Griffith, do we know how much money this is?
Forty-two thousand.
Okay.
Three thousand five hundred dollars per month.
And, Mr. Chairman, we, this is obviously something that we have to do. It's not, it's not even a question. It's, it's safety, it's inter-elections, so I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Yeah, it was labeled the correct way she did it was for the first year of this unfunded management software for the Supervisor of Elections. So, anyway, I, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? That's unanimous.
And the next item is item number seven. I just have a couple informational items, and for the board record, I have included additional FEMA-required contract provisions for contractors Pyget Asphalt.
Been waiting on it.
Yeah.
Never did get to use it. Never did.
About one week.
I was, I was just imagining my retirement out there enjoying throwing my crap, crap stuff, or just, never happened, never happened for a while, but we're gonna get it.
That's right.
Kind of funny, ain't it?
Yeah, it happens, comes full circle.
Kind of funny.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. Anybody have anything for Ms. Griffith before we proceed to Mr. Morone? All right, thank you.
I'm trying to be as quick as possible. On page 26, item 2A, your last meeting during your committee assignments discussion, Chairman Jones asked if a new board appointee was needed. And consortium board, former Commissioner Parrish was the board appointee, therefore a new appointee is needed on that board. There was consortium meeting scheduled last Tuesday, and they asked for county participation, so I asked Chairman Jones to represent the county at that meeting until the board appoints a representative. Chairman Jones, I have a few words, but I do need action to appoint a representative to the consortium board.
I don't know enough to know about how often they meet or how they do, but Commissioner Sanders, weren't you on the consortium board before?
For years, excuse me, for years.
It's been a while, hasn't it?
Yes, it has, and what it does is 2010 was when the oils were hot. So, what, what happens is, they usually try to have them in the meetings with fact, fact meetings, so you're really gonna be there anyway.
Yes.
I mean, I don't, Mr. Commissioner Jones, you chairman, I don't mind you having it.
Okay, whatever the board wants.
You want one, you want it?
I mean, that's fine with me. I don't know how many, extends your, how many boards you're on already.
It's usually is done in conjunction with fact, so you're already there anyway, if you're going to the legislative...
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we appoint Chairman Jones to do that.
So, we have a motion to approve a denial letter by, by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion, Commissioners? Thank you, we have a lot of work to do, let's get to it. All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Well, that term, voluntold, that's what you...
That's the way it works.
To be, speaking of Commissioner Sanders, the former Commissioner of both was the board's appointee to Y Library Board, but they're, they're quick on the draw, they've already reached out to Commissioner Sanders to serve, so they weren't wasting time, and so Commissioner Sanders is willing to serve, so can I get a motion to appoint her? We won't even discuss it too much, how about that?
I'll make a motion that she's been voluntold.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amerson. Isn't that correct? I thought you said that correctly. You did second the motion, I'm just making sure. It's all good. I'm not trying to put words into you, I'm sorry. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, item three. Unfortunately, Ms. Pat couldn't be here, but we still need to, one of the things we're going to do is set up workshops to hear from your internet service providers. She talked to you about it the last time she were here. With your approval, this morning or this afternoon, we can schedule those workshops for both meetings in January at 1:30 PM. So, I just need your approval to go ahead and do that. I think she has one provider, the first meeting, and two providers in the second meeting.
I'll make a motion on that. I'd like to see them here.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? I will say that one of the things she was gonna present today, because we talked about it extensively on the phone, it was brought up at the fact meeting last week, the FCC has come out with a new broadband map, they've released one, but it is not good.
It is terrible.
So, what we really need, we've had, and she, I'm not trying to steal some of Ms. Pat's stuff, because she was gonna announce it today to the board, we had to have a certain number of participants in the speed test. We exceeded that. We're one of the few counties in our region that's actually reached that milestone. But the next thing we need to do with our residents and those that, that you can, there's a way, she's gonna put out the link to the map, that's one of the things I wanted to push out with the advertising dollars, because if you're, if it says on the map that I'm getting service that I don't have, I need to challenge it.
Yeah.
And it needs to be done by individuals and businesses.
Yes.
Because that's, the, the federal government's given time, and they're, they're asking for that to happen. They're wanting people to challenge the map to know for sure that what they pass is adequate and is accurate as can be. So, that's one of the things she was gonna actually discuss today.
And that's like me, I live way up there, y'all know where I live, at the edge of Liberty County over there, and it said I've got all these providers, but yet I'm on satellite Wi-Fi and all that, so I was talking about going to get all link, but he, he would not be here.
Big thing is what you're paying for versus what you get.
That's a bigger...
That's right.
That's the thing that aggravates me.
Mine, both, as you're all by.
So, that, just know that's one of the things that she's gonna be pushing out, so when you see it, you know what it is. I just wanted to mention it while we're here. Did we ever vote?
I'm thinking so.
Okay. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? Aye. All in favor? Uh, all opposed? That's unanimous, sir, we're having some workshops.
Great. Uh, four, based on a recent inspection, repair of the elevator in the courthouse, cone elevator informed staff that existing push-button configurations are nearly obsolete and they're having a hard time locating replacements for the elevator. They recommend updating the elevator panel and buttons for a total cost of nineteen thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-five cents. Board action to approve that update, upgrade.
Is that a lot of money?
Yeah.
Gotta have it though.
For an elevator? Probably not.
Probably not. And they're gonna replace all, the entire panel, the entire push, push-button panel.
And the buttons.
Yeah, and buttons.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Twenty grand for a panel?
For the panel that there's in the elevator.
It's electrical too, they bring them up around, all kinds of wires.
Three floors and, that's, that seems deep.
We have a second by Commissioner Sanders.
I'm just saying.
Oh, it does, it does.
Yeah, they were, they were kind of.
Gotta have it though.
Commissioner Amerson, they were kind enough to send me, uh, basically sent me a, a projection that every year we wait longer, how much more it costs us to get it done.
Did they even check with anybody else?
Uh, I have not, because we have a cone and a maintenance contract for the elevators.
I mean, so they got us.
There you go.
Kinda, whatever.
And let me ask you another thing. Do they have the ADA compliant with, you know, where you can hit the braille on it?
Yes, I think they do, but of course they will in, in the new, the new configuration.
Make sure of that, because everything's ADA.
Under commercial standards, it's gotta, it's gotta.
Yeah.
Alright, any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? Uh, all opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, so we have some informational items, I'm gonna breeze through, through some of them and we could talk about some of them more as you would like. Our update that's there for you to read, I will probably bring, come back to you in January, starting to schedule events once we have that, we're closer to that date. We already did number six. Uh, number seven, the training at the St. James Monocle, the trial department went well. Um, the numbers are growing, they're, you know, things are moving well. There's an alarm system that's been installed there that just, Mr. Amick and, and the volunteers, they have access to it for now. And we'll change that as time goes on, when they get a chief, we got a hierarchy in place, you know, we'll give them different codes, we know who's going in, in and out. Uh, planning discussion. So Chairman Jones has requested at your January third meeting, there's an agenda item that will set aside time to allow each commissioner the opportunity to state their future short-term and long-term goals during their term. Let me know if you need staff to research any information that may help you with your message before that meeting. Good?
Yeah, I like that, I really do. I was talking to you yesterday about that, Michael.
Yep, so, that, that consent agenda, you know, don't look at me. So, uh, over the years, I've been talking about consent agenda, so the approach by another commissioner yesterday wanting to know, can we move to that to help some of the, move the meetings along in a more efficient manner, but yet still serve the people? So, I will attempt to start creating some consent agendas within our main agenda. At the January third meeting, Commissioners, it will take some tweaking. I know it's a, it's a, it's a change, it's a culture change. And I don't want to leave anybody out, but I think if we work together as a team, we can get this done and help, like, like for instance, planning and zoning. There's a lot of things, you know, sometimes we have four or five docks. And then you guys go through each single dock, but nobody really has any comments about it because you've already reached out to your planning and zoning staff, you're good with it. We can basically approve all docks, it's one consent.
But we're gonna be able to pull some if we want to do.
At any time you want, in any consent agenda item.
Yep.
Yes, anytime. And in addition, also too, maybe I'll work with your department directors that if you guys don't have any comments for them or they have no action items, they just, they can show up and zoom like they do. If there's no items, no discussion, we move on to the next director to kind of help out. But there are times that there's not an action item, but you do need to talk to a director, that'll be fine too. But we'll work together, I just kinda want you to know, if you have any concerns, please let me know, except for you Attorney Shula. Um, item ten, oh, the airport committee, during my discussions with Commissioner Amerson. One of his goals is to have the board consider the creation of an airport committee. In past meetings, the board have talked about this. You know, we talked about the purpose of this committee, who should serve, the membership and the actual role. So to add this as an action item at a future meeting, I'd like the opportunity to meet with each of you Commissioners individually, hear your thoughts, what you like. After those meetings, I'll create a narrative on my report that states what you guys have in common and I will let you guys as a board discuss and resolve your differences. That's a nice way of me saying I will put what you guys like together and I'll move out the way as you talk about your differences.
Mr. Chairman, if you will, uh, and I, I won't, I won't beat this horse long, I know we're running a little long here. But that airport, um, it, it, I've, I've reached out and I've told Michael this. I spoke with some other municipal airports and everybody I've talked to has a structure. They go about, basically just like our hospital, we have a board, you know, manager, particularly with the airport. And every one of them that I've talked to, now, obviously they have different municipalities that own the airport, but it's still the same, I mean, it's still the same thing. You know, you can peel it any way you want to, it's still the same banana, so to speak. But the thing about it is, is they have a, a manager, they have a, a board, and then they have a board chairman that reports to a board, which is us, or city board, it depends on how, how it was, whichever one. That, that airport has potentially probably one of our biggest, uh, I mean, obviously, like Michael said earlier, there's, there's, there's a huge amount of grant potential there. I mean, we're talking lots and, lots of money. More so than any other, uh, you know, outside of the hospital and a few other things, that's probably like what, in the top four, top three that could potentially bring influx of money into the area. Industry, that, that is a huge, uh, that, that's a big project. That's, that's something that, that needs attention. We need, we need to get that board established. And, and my big thing about it is, is that we need to advertise that. And I'm, I'm just pitching this so y'all hear it from me. But, but if you, at me, and this is my train of thought, we need to advertise for those board positions. I don't care if there's anybody in this department that, that doesn't have any interest in it, but what you're gonna do is, you're gonna get people that are interested, that are, have aviation knowledge, that have what we need to, to, to move forward with this in, in a, in a, in a correct manner. They're, they're the ones that's gonna apply for that, you know, I'm, if I would, I wouldn't apply for it, you know what I mean? Because I have no, no, uh, interest in, in that, um, you know, before the election, now obviously I do. But, um, but what I'm getting at is, is, and I know y'all have fatigue. I can name names and I know y'all, you guys are tired, but if you wanna, you wanna get people to, to get involved and get quiet, um, get them busy, you know? And so I, I believe if we, if we advertise this, we get, get the people to come in and, uh, we set up a workshop, whatnot later on, to review the board members. We pick out who we want. And, and, and everybody would have a voice in that. I mean, they might all come from Ms. Cheryl's district, or that could all come from, from, uh, any, any of ours. I don't care, as long as we have qualified personnel on that board. And now that's, that's my take on it moving forward. And that's all I got.
That's good. I will say this while we're here before we go on, I do agree that it doesn't need to be like we've done some of our other boards, that don't need to necessarily be an appointment from each district. Because then you, you, you may or may not have the best people at the table. I, I do agree with that.
I agree with that as well.
Yeah, Commissioners, do you want this, this board to be a catalyst to economic development?
Well, that's what it needs to be.
I mean, I think it'll go hand in hand with everything, actually.
It needs to be airport slash EDC, or ED, whatever, because it's like you said, Commissioner Amerson, we've got a lot of dollars out there for that airport.
And this is hanging out there.
Potential for jobs. And remember I brought up the Alpha Project that we didn't, we're sitting here, right here. But anyway, and all that, that could possibly employ some of our folks. And, and, and on-hand knowledge from the school system out there with the young kids welding and stuff. I mean, it's just a, it, I hate to use this phrase, and then you will never hear me do it unless I have something that's on my heart. And that's a win-win situation. We have an airport out there that could produce a lot of revenue for this county and people.
It's just, it's got a lot of potential, that it needs to be represented correctly and, and.
But we have to be vigilant about it.
Sounds like we're definitely all ready to discuss and.
Yeah, so, and so you're gonna hear in a little while, a little, a little while, that about the, the site readiness work that Duke has been doing at the airport. So see, once again, the airport comes up to you guys. But okay, we'll talk and then, you know, as soon as I get through it, have something next, you know, early next year. Eleven, I won't read, you can read on your own. I, I, I'm sure, anytime you want, Commissioner Jones, you could update the board and the, the conference you attended. And I will try and do the ethics class here on the seventeenth at nine o'clock. So I'm gonna livestream it. But if you can't be here, you wanna do it on your own, on your tablet, and this actually applies to, not Commissioner Amerson, not Commissioner Sanders, but the chairman, Commissioner Ward and Commissioner Lockley, he had the doctor's appointment, by the way, that's why he walked away.
That's right.
He did tell me that, yeah.
Just, just for clarification, we, I don't have to do our ethics.
Not this year, no, you do not.
We do ours in June.
Michael.
Save yourself that wisdom, just be polite, sir.
I can be unethical for another six months.
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Moreau, before you finish, I do wanna highlight this OJT program.
Uh-huh.
That is specifically money that's been brought to Franklin County by Career Source.
Yeah.
So the way it works from talking to them, say for instance, you want to hire somebody at your business, we're gonna hire Carquest. Well, we can take that potential person we want to hire, send them to Career Source first. And I'm sure there's a time limit, but they acted like it was pretty broad. If they're hired, if they're sent from Career Source to us, Career Source pays half of their salary to the business. Half of the wage you're giving the worker is provided for by Career Source.
Cool.
To try to help make sure people get jobs, able to retain jobs, cause you don't want businesses to have to turn around and let somebody go because the money's a problem.
Yes.
Know what I mean? So it's a very valid program and it's specifically for Franklin County, the dollars they.
And if you guys want some laminated fires that you can post and hand out, I'll let Courtney know, we, we can get those done. Because, uh, put it in your social media, put it in, you know, as many places, cause Kim said, we're not getting a lot of response from Franklin County for that, so that's why I brought it up.
And the other thing on the legislative stuff, so there were two or three particular items in the different, uh, fact committees they had that we helped put forward Franklin County this year. One of them is the re-establishment of the East Point Water and Sewer District by the legislature. The other one is to make sure that we keep our pulse of what's going on with attempts to try to close correctional facilities.
Yeah.
In rural communities. So we're still trying to go at that. And one of the things that I brought up on the floor the other day, they were talking about using tourist development tax dollars for economic development. That requires rewriting, rewriting the whole law, probably a hard push. What I did bring up on the floor the other day and they are looking at it, is asking them to amend the ten million dollar cap and make it a two million dollar cap for fiscal constraint camps. So we'll see how that.
That's cool.
That's really cool, hope that happens.
Yes. Okay, uh, the workshop reminder is at one-thirty, but as Attorney Shula has said to me, as I was, he was raising me up, it's one-thirty, scheduled for one-thirty, but it actually starts when you guys get here.
There you go.
So, yeah. And, um, your next meeting, of course, is December twentieth at nine AM here.
Mr. Chairman, I've got something real quick. I just wanna update the, the public. Um, some may be aware, some may not be aware, but the Senior Citizen Center over in Carabelle, basically we're told by Area for Aging, Agency for Aging, I don't know the terminology, but they were to be closed down as of December thirty-first. So I want the public to know and the residents of Carabelle. I, I went there yesterday to visit with Ms. Mathis, who's kind of in charge, and kinda got the rundown of what's going on. I just want them to know and assure them that we are working, I had Attorney Shula look into some things, we are working on to, to make sure that we do have a space. Cause I want it more than just the meals. I, it's a gathering place. They, they provide trips to, they take people to Walmart to, to shop. They bring people over here to Appalachia to shop and pick up groceries. It's more than just the food, it's the, the visitation, socialization. They go there, they help people out, they kinda help watch a, an elderly man so his wife can go to work to provide, um, for their family. So, you know, I just want people to know that we are working on this and if there's a way we can fix it, we, we can and will. I just want to assure them that we are aware and, and are on their side in this. The lady that's in charge of, I guess for our Area for, Area for Aging is supposed to be there tomorrow at ten. I would, I'm gonna try to plan on being there just so I can be a representative on the county, just to see what's going on exactly.
So, Commissioners, I've been talking to both of you Commissioners about this.
She was supposed to call me yesterday.
She's talking about Lita from Liberty County who runs that thing.
Anita Schabber?
Yeah, Lita, yeah, that's Lita's, yes. And with you is Lisa Brett, who's Executive Director of Area Agency. I'm trying to get Lisa here on the twentieth so that she can address the board. You guys gotta ask all the questions you need.
But, but you don't, you gotta have a moment.
Yep, you sure can.
Okay, and not to trot on nobody's feet, but I've been through this before with them. Michael, you know we have.
Yes, ma'am.
My, both my. Okay, what it is, is we give area agencies fifty-one thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars a year, a year. Those folks have known for over a month that they were gonna close that down over there. And that's the area agency. But what we need to do is before, and I know we can't make no motions, cause y'all did it like this for a while back. But before we get into the December twentieth meeting, we need to let Elder Affairs, that is, and most of all, we need to have area agency on aging their board. We need to have something directed to the board of the chairman of that board and that board. And then copy the Elder Affairs Secretary and also the governor and also the, um, state representative and the, and the state senator. Because if you do it on the twentieth, you got all those holidays and they gonna be in there and they gonna close that thing. That is the intention of them to close that thing. They have been offered many other ideas and solutions, but they don't wanna hear that. So that's what I'm saying. On something like this, when it's like this, I don't care if it's one person that goes to that building. They don't need to be closing it. And if they are gonna close it, this board needs to come together as a board and say, okay, you can forget all, all those allocations, you better go back and re-figure the allocations that we're giving you, cause we've already given you a thousand dollars. So, I mean, we need to do something, because we need to let those folks at area agencies know that we're not gonna sit here and stand it and take it, and we need to let Elder Affairs, the secretary of Elder Affairs, and the governor and the two representatives. But it, I mean, they've done this before. They've done this before and they closed it down before and we were able to open it back up now. Michael, get, if I'm wrong, correct me. They, they say, you know, him and Hallwell, it's insurance, it's electrical thing, but when it comes down to it, they just don't wanna keep the thing open.
They first told me it was because of, uh, uh, insurance, to reinsure the building, there were issues, they didn't think we could afford it. But then they started to talk about the operation. So, Commissioners, here's what I would do, and I don't think a motion is needed at, at this moment. I will contact, uh, Lisa Brett, she's Executive Director, say, hey, Lisa, here's a problem, here's what the board wants to know. Is there something we could work out to extend the deadline, or do I need to start noticing Elder Affairs, the governor and, and your board?
Don't ask her, don't ask her. If, I mean, you ask her if you can do something to extend, that's fine. But you just say, now, Ms. Brett, let me let you know, as we have in the past, you have done this to us before. The commissioner is up there that remembers it and we wanna let you know, we're putting you on notice that we're gonna be making contact.
Okay.
I think that, I think that'd be a fair clear way of doing it.
And if it comes out to a letter, I'll just reach out to each of you and, and see what you feel. And that works?
And just so.
Because they're, they're saying, well, you don't have one, maybe two, maybe five. It don't matter, it don't matter. They serve a purpose there and by goodness, we ain't gonna let them take them.
And, and just so the communities aware, Mr. Chairman, sorry, Attorney Shula and I, we, I've done research and, and I, I directed him to do some research. There is no reverter clause. The, the building is owned by Area for Agency on Aging. The only thing is, there's no reverter clause, but if they do sell the, 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 um, facility, it has to go and be sold to another government entity or nonprofit organization. Is that correct, Attorney Shula?
That's what Mr. Moreau was told by their director. I haven't reviewed their documents, but that's what he was told.
That's what I was told.
I think Ms. Lisa Brett.
Yep.
Tell you another thing, if you look at it like this, if they cease to do that nonprofit, the, their nonprofit status ceases to exist in that building. So they would have to be starting to do, pay taxes, which would be probably about two, three thousand dollars a year. So you stay at there.
In other words, we got some leverage.
Yes, sir. That's what it sounds like, yeah.
We ain't scared to go where we got to take it, people.
Well, we don't have second classes, is there?
Yeah, that's right. Thank.
That's it for me.
Okay. Anybody have anything else for Mr. Moreau? Mr. Shula?
Mr. Chairman, my report only has informational items, so unless the board wants me to present them or has questions about the informational items, I will stand down on my report.
Okay, so Commissioner Combs, I'm gonna show you all something, Commissioners. It's the reason why I brought it back to you. The calendar you have here. The calendar you have here from FACT, they do an annual calendar?
March.
March.
And that's what associates in the counties for people that don't know what FACT is.
March is Franklin County.
That's awesome.
We're in the calendar. Yep, so that's why I brought y'all back a copy, so you could have one.
Thank you.
And we'll be doing, we've been doing a press release on that, Mr. Moreau, they sent it to me today.
Okay.
But that's my, Commissioner Combs, if anyone else, we've got commented out.
Yep, see you guys back as close to 1:30 as possible.
All right, meeting adjourned.